Good morning Wichita and welcome to City Hall. We'll call this meeting to order. With us this morning is Youth Leader Sage Liggett of Arc Church to provide our invocation. Following that invocation, we will have our Pledge of Allegiance and we ask and invite you to stand for both.
Thank you Mayor Wu, City Council members of Wichita. Let's bow our heads and pray. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for today. We come with grateful hearts, Lord, for the opportunity to gather and discuss, Lord, everything in regards to our city. Lord, in First Timothy 2:1 it says, "To pray for all of those in authority." So I first of all lift you up, lift up everyone in authority today, all decision makers to you, Lord, that you would give them clarity of mind, Lord, that you would give them wisdom, Lord, that you would give them peace in stressful times, Lord. We pray 2 Chronicles 7:14, "To humble yourselves and pray, and you will heal our land, Father." So we pray that you will bless our people of Wichita, that you will heal our sick and that you will heal our land. It's in the mighty name of Jesus we pray. Amen.
My allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Mr. Liggett. Mr. Clerk, can you please call the first item?
Approve the minutes of regular meeting, May 6, 2025.
Are there any changes to the minutes?
I have one. Was the vote for consent agenda, was it 6-0 or 7-0 last week? I think it was 7-0.
I will go and check that and make the correction if necessary.
Okay, thank you. And also, if we can get the names of people who speak as they walk up, because I think you can only speak once a month, so I think that would be good too, if we can do that. Other than that, that's good. Thank you.
I move to approve the meeting minutes for May 6, 2025.
Second.
Motion and a second any further discussion. I see none. Mr. Clerk, please open the roll. Motion passes 7-0. Mr. Clerk, please call the next item.
Awards and Proclamations. Proclamations this week are Bike Month, Wichita Facility Management Day, and Law Week.
May I please ask the Bike Walk Wichita team to come forward? And any council members who are involved with Bike Walk Wichita? The proclamation reads, "The City of Wichita, Kansas, founded in 1870, whereas Bike Walk Wichita is teaming up with the City of Wichita and community partners to recognize National Bike Month in our community. Whereas for more than a century, the bicycles have been an essential part of the lives of Americans and is a vital, environmentally friendly, sound form of transportation and an excellent form of recreation and exercise. Whereas the education of cyclists and motorists as to the proper and safe operation of bicycles is important to ensure the safety and comfort of all users in an effort to reduce cycle-related injuries and deaths. Whereas creating bicycle-friendly communities has been shown to improve residents' health and well-being, quality of life, community spirit, and reduction of pollution and congestion. Now therefore be it resolved that the Wichita City Council does hereby proclaim May 2025 as Bike Month in the City of Wichita and encourage all residents, businesses, and independent cyclists throughout our community to support the celebration of Bike Month and promote bicycling as a healthy, sustainable, and enjoyable form of transportation and recreation."
Good morning Mayor Wu, council members and community partners. My name is Holly Terrell and I am proud to serve as the Executive Director of Bike Walk Wichita. On behalf of our organization and many volunteers, advocates, and writers we represent, I would like to thank you for this proclamation recognizing May as Bike Month. We're especially grateful to be celebrating alongside the Health and Wellness Coalition, WAMPO, city staff, and so many others who work year-round to make Wichita a more bikeable and walkable community. Bicycling isn't just a fun activity, it's a vital form of transportation, a tool for wellness, and a way to connect with our neighbors. Bike Month allows us to celebrate that and to continue working toward a Wichita where everyone feels safe and welcome on our streets, sidewalks, and paths regardless of how they get around. We invite all Wichitaans to join us throughout the month for a variety of events, classes, opportunities to ride, and conversation. You can find complete lists of Bike Month activities at BikeWalkWichita.org or BikeMonthICT.org. Together, we can build a stronger, healthier city, one pedal stroke at a time. Thank you.
I would like to invite the Wichita Facility Management Team to come forward at this The proclamation reads, "The City of Wichita, Kansas, founded in 1870, whereas World Facility Management Day aims to recognize the efforts of the facility management profession anywhere that facility management professionals influence the health, safety, productivity, and well-being of people who utilize the built environment. Whereas Wichita facility managers build, support, and maintain facilities in such sectors and industries as medical, production, food supply, office buildings, transportation, education, financial, and real estate, keeping these businesses open and producing. Whereas the Wichita chapter of IFMA has assisted Wichita State University with adding a degree emphasis in facilities management and increased awareness will benefit Wichita State University and the local facility management workforce. Whereas facility management professionals have kept buildings open and maintained in a safe manner in both public and private sectors. Now therefore be it resolved that the Wichita City Council does hereby proclaim May 14, 2025, as Wichita Facility Management Day in the City of Wichita and encourage all individuals to show gratitude for facility management members who maintain infrastructure and provide safety for workers and guests."
Thank you Mayor and City Council. Appreciate this moment today. My name is Joel Elsia and I'm the current President of the Wichita IFMA Chapter and I just want to say how much we appreciate this opportunity to be recognized and all those individuals in our profession, as the mayor mentioned, that helped keep these buildings open and safe for all the citizens of Wichita. Just thank you very much.
The proclamation reads, "The City of Wichita, Kansas, founded in 1870, whereas the rule of law is a cornerstone of our democracy, ensuring that all individuals regardless of background or belief are treated fairly, with dignity and justice. The legal profession plays a vital role in upholding the rights and responsibilities enshrined in our laws, advocating for fairness and serving communities in times of need. Whereas the United States Constitution establishes a framework for a balanced government, protecting individual rights while promoting the common good. In 1958, President Eisenhower proclaimed Law Day to honor the role of law in the creation of the United States of America. And in 1961, US Congress issued a joint resolution declaring May 1 as Law Day. Whereas the Wichita Bar Association annually commemorates Law Week with educational programs and school visits and public service initiatives throughout Sedgwick County, encouraging all residents to better understand and appreciate the rule of law. Whereas the theme for Law Day 2025, "The Constitution's Promise: Out of Many, One," reminds us that unity is achieved not through uniformity but through shared principles and mutual respect. Now therefore be it resolved that the Wichita City Council does hereby proclaim May 12 through 16, 2025, as Law Week in the City of Wichita and encourage all citizens to take part in this celebration by learning more about our legal system, participating in civic life, and honoring the contributions of those who work each day to uphold justice, equity, and the rule of law."
Thank you Mayor Wu, City Council members. My name is Michelle Mo-Witty. I'm President of the Wichita Bar Association. I appreciate you not just giving us Law Day but a Declaration of Law Week. You know, those in our profession take an oath to uphold the Constitution and support the rule of law. And I just want to thank you for making space to recognize those in this profession who steady, quiet work upholds those ideals on a daily basis. Thank you.
We'd like to recognize that Lily Meadows, our City Manager Fellow, will be leaving us this week, so thank you for your service these past months.
Mr. Clerk, please call the next item.
Public Agenda. The public agenda allows for up to five speakers to have five minutes each to address the council. No action will be taken relative to items on the public agenda other than referral to the City Manager for information as necessary. Speakers will please state their name and address for the record. A time clock will display the speaker's remaining time to speak. Order and rules of decorum will be observed. The first speaker is Arthur Stokes, advocating for black mold.
Good morning everyone and thank you for allowing me another opportunity to be among you, Mayor Wu and staff, City Council. I don't have a whole lot on my agenda, you know, it's pretty much the same old plane Jane in dealing with the topic of Starry Buckus, black mold, and it touches everybody, you know. We might be got something in this building right now. We won't know that until, you know, such time. But my address is 2614 South Topeka, and I have, I've had several instances with the past two landlords and the experiences were where I lived at, at Third and Topeka before I moved, pretty much where I'm at in there. It got into an eviction and they got to the point of retaliation because they lost the contract with the city. Landlords love money. We all need, everybody needs, you know, we all need things, but the landlord, they lost touch and they did half of what the city asked them to do. They wanted to spray paint the bathtub instead of doing it right, they wanted to cut corners. I mean, a lot of times we get complacent, you know, and we get addicted to money. And in dealing with the mold topic, I finna tie this in, as a retaliation, they cut my lights off from the basement. They also had went into the basement before that got to that level and they ousted one of the neighbors and she come out of the homeless community and of course, you know, she had some people come over, but it wasn't never really an issue where, you know, it got violent or rowdy or people got hurt and they cut her stuff off. When you cut off people from electricity, it increases the mold concentration that's already there, because that's what I experienced. I mean, it wasn't a good experience. They came to court and the lady, she brought her whole staff in there. None of this stuff came in as a topic and that's because we're in denial. You know, we want to talk about the good stuff that we do for the tenants and the good stuff that we do, but we're not talking about the stuff that seems like it's minor and it gets bigger. You remember I kept talking about the mushroom? When you first look at it, it looks cute, it's so small, but it keeps mushrooming, it keeps growing, it gets bigger, it gets more sophisticated, it gets complicated, it gets into everything. And while I was there too, I couldn't, I could never relate to, I ordered some food for my pet schnauzer and he was a very healthy dog. I only had like antibiotics once. He was middle-aged and during that particular time with him, I lost him, he started having seizures. And for a while I kept thinking about the three kernels that I, dog food that I served and, and you know, within five minutes he was having seizures until about the fifth one, I lost him in a seizure. And the fourth one was so bad they had to give him five times the phenobarbital. All of that, we think, as I really got honest and looked back, it came from that black mold. You know, I couldn't understand it. So it's, it's a very tough topic. I mean, folk are in denial, people are living with it and they're sick behind it and they don't even realize it. They don't know it, man. You know, that a mold affects you, it can affect you for his brain fog, you know, nose bleeds, you know. It's, it's other parts of it, but I can't tie it in this morning, so, you know, we need to start penalizing landlords when they doing stuff like that because only thing you're doing is giving that poor individual a death sentence. So, you know, I plead with City Council, I demand that we, the people, we need this. Thank you. Please.
Thank you, Mr. Stokes. Councilmember Hoheisel.
Thank you Mayor. City Manager, are we still online for discussing some new ordinances and codes at the May 27th workshop?
Yes, we are.
Okay, I would recommend coming down Tuesday, May 27th. We will be having this discussion. Also, if you have people that, I think you might be outside that window, I believe it's 180 days, but if you have people who you feel have been unfairly evicted, we do have a process set up, landlord retaliation process. So make sure you send the people down here to talk to us if they do feel like they have been unfairly evicted and retaliated against. And also, I believe HUD is in October maybe, and I believe that they are going to a new standard as far as inspections of Section A housing to pertaining to mold, so it's to make it more uniform, make it easier for landlords to address, so that might also be something to keep on your radar as well. So please come down, May 27th, we'll be having that workshop.
And as I keep saying, it's not just in the Section A, it's in the whole state needs to, you know, go back, you know, make us better, make us well.
And there is going to be some barriers set up as far as a state allowing us to really get into inspections. So there is some work to do on the state level as well to help addresses.
Right, right. I want to see that, I want to see that changed. I mean, definitely.
Appreciate you, thank you.
Councilmember Johnson.
Thanks Mayor. I just wanted to say I appreciate you, Mr. Stokes, continuing to talk about this. It's folks like you who are courageous enough to keep talking about it that really help when we talk about these issues. I have been in spaces where landlords don't believe me when I say stories like yours happen, so by you continuing to come up here, I definitely appreciate that. And if you have any, anyone else with those real-life experiences, tell, have them come to the workshop. I mean, people really need to see that. If not, that's fine, I appreciate you doing it, but your, your voice matters in this and those experiences matter, and we will be talking about this on the 27th.
I'll just add just a couple of quick items. The workshop usually is council members that discuss amongst with the staff, so if any public comment would, would like to speak about the specific topic, they should speak at the very beginning of that meeting when there's public agenda, so just giving you a word of advice, if you want to speak, you can speak at the public agenda, which is at the beginning of the workshop. In addition, you mentioned a couple of things about state lawmakers. I would encourage you also to reach out to your state legislators. You also have another body of government, which is Sedgwick County. Those are your commissioners, and then this body is the City Council, so we only deal with city issues. But there are three levels that you could also address and give your shared lived experience to them as well. Thank you.
Mr. Clerk, can you please call the next individual?
Crystal Diane Sigler, homelessness and tiny housing.
Good morning Mayor Wu and City Council. My name is Crystal Sigler. My address is 600 West 34th Street North. I'm in Maggie Ballard's district. The homeless have been on my heart for some time now and I've had a chance to help out with serving dinners with the humankind and have seen only a little bit of the issues that they face. I would like to make a suggestion to the City of Wichita to build tiny home villages for the homeless. It would be a great start for them to get back on their feet with a sense of belonging to the community again. It also helps to house several people in a smaller area and it's cheaper to build tiny homes than regular-sized homes. Providing tiny homes along with case management would go a long way to ending most of the homeless population. Wichita-Sedgwick County 2024 Point in Time Homeless Count results released on the United Ways, UnitedWayPlains.org website. The annual Point in Time Homeless Count is a national effort undertaken once a year by professionals and volunteers to count those who are currently experiencing homelessness in the communities across the US. The results provide a snapshot of persons encountered during a one-day count and are used to identify resources needed to address this important issue, make local funding decisions, and study trends and increase awareness about those who don't have either, who don't have shelter. The Coalition to End Homelessness in Wichita-Sedgwick County conducts a survey in Wichita for the 24-hour period. It's coordinated and managed by the United Way of Plains. The results are reported to the US Department of Housing and Urban Development and published on their website. Wichita is working to get to a functional zero, meaning the number of people becoming newly homeless does not exceed the resources available to house them. "We want homelessness to be rare, brief, and non-recurring," says Snyder's with United Way's Continuum of Care, which coordinates local agencies serving the homeless and compliance with federal housing agencies. This year's count was taken on January 25, 2024 for the preceding night of January 24. Key facts in this year's count, 691 persons were identified as homeless, those living in emergency shelter, transitional housing, safe haven, or places not meant for human habitation, such as cars or on the street. The total number of homeless persons decreased by 12 persons or 1.5% decrease when compared with 2023. Of the 691 individuals identified as homeless, 188 or 21% were unsheltered. This was an increase of 25% over those counted in unsheltered in 2023. It is unlikely that some of the homeless will not want a place to live. It's probably a scary thought to have a home to call your own when you've been on the streets for years. Tiny homes would provide a relief to the homeless shelters as well, allowing homeless to start living on their own, preparing and making their own food and having a bed of their own. Using tiny homes allows you to house more people and they easily support a communal environment. It's an affordable housing program option and a budget-friendly. It is also a smaller footprint and translates to decreased environmental impact, reducing energy consumption, carbon emissions, and overall resources used. Some key takeaways, our affordability and reduced cost of living are major benefits of tiny homes. Modern amenities and innovative design solutions can be found in many homes. Eco-friendly and sustainable living is often associated with tiny house movement. Zoning laws, space limitations, and financing, financing challenges can prevent drawbacks in tiny housing living. Some of the frequently asked questions that I got off the internet were, what is the average cost of building a tiny home? A tiny home ranges from $10,000 to $180,000 but averages between $30,000 and $75,000. What modern amenities can be included? Despite the small footprint, tiny homes can include a wide variety of modern luxurious amenities such as air conditioning, washer/dryer units, full stove tops, and even bathtubs. Thank you.
Thank you Ms. Sigler.
Thank you.
Councilmember Vice Mayor Johnston.
Crystal, thank you for coming and bringing attention to this. Appreciate it. We did have four of us here on the bench that, that did do the point-in-time count, so we're very familiar with it. Everyone on this council to the person is engaged in helping solve the homeless issue, so we are very, very engaged. So we are very, very engaged. We've put our money where our mouth is, um, given millions and millions of dollars to the MAC and to, to build it and to fund it the first two years. Um, I, I would like to maybe, the definition of homeless, uh, functional zero is when more people are going out of homeless than are coming in. That's, that's the definition of homelessness. Um, as far as number of houses, it ranges anywhere from 20,000 to, we heard 50,000 this, this weekend. Um, I think the general consensus is plus or minus 30,000 units, uh, duplex will be two units. And really, that, that's at all income levels of housing. Uh, most of it though is at affordable housing. So it, it's a big elephant to, to digest and little, little, uh, bits and pieces out of it. And tiny homes probably is, is one of those pieces that can help. So I appreciate you coming and, and presenting today. Thank you.
Councilmember Ballard.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to say thank you for showing up today and advocating. We talk about it, I feel like all day, every day, but it's nice, um, to have conversations, especially when the community is bringing them to us. So thank you.
May I ask Director Sally to just address the tiny home, um, idea? I know that this has been floated around, uh, but the city, um, and under your leadership, there, there's an even better solution. Can you talk about, um, the additional space that you'd like to see at MAC?
Sure. So, uh, the first question I would have is how are you defining tiny home? Because I've seen as small as 110 square feet and as large as 1,200 square feet defined as tiny homes. So huge array. Um, definitely a little bit more challenging to do individual units, more expensive than doing a multifamily unit. You know, uh, 50 roofs to replace is much more expensive than the roof on a 50 unit apartment complex, just as an example. Uh, we definitely recognize the need to be able to create additional housing that will expect and will accept people coming from homelessness, having those wraparound services. Um, the next plan is actually a, to build a 75 unit building on the property at the Park Elementary site at the MAC that will include 50 units of permanent supportive housing and 25 units of non-congregate shelter. Um, that project, the, our development agreement is currently being reviewed by Partner Law and we intend to bring that very shortly to the council so that we can start building that property. Um, we have identified all of the funding related to that and we're having further conversations about future tax credit, um, applications and possibilities to, to, um, definitely increase the number of affordable units in our community.
Thanks for what you do.
Thank you.
Mr. Clerk, can you please call the next individual?
Sybil Strum, how can they seize her house without permission?
Good morning. My name is Sybil Strum. I reside at 326 North Walnut. The reason I'm here, it's November 21st, 1998. The city seized my house. I was not at the home when they took it. My house was a half haven for drug infested kids that needed a home. And alcoholic parents could not take care of them. So I would be the one taking care of them. I was on 2909 North Richmond when I went down to my neighborhood, my old neighborhood. And I was told by my next door neighbor, there's a guy in your house. I said, a guy? What's he doing in my house? It was a central. I didn't know nothing about the central. They came in, they took pictures. They destroyed my house without my permission. They stole my stuff and I am very appalled by it because I've been there for the community. I have been teaching and stuff like that. I don't understand. You're supposed to tell the homeowner that you are going to take the house. I was not alerted. Also, I have excessive mortgage you wouldn't believe and I don't even think it's going to be paid off because I didn't even know nothing about it. They came, they went to fidelity, they made me homeless in a way. Because I am appalled. I am so appalled. I wanted help, but I did not want it the way you tear down my house. You take my life away. You put me in a, uh, terrible situation. My soil, of my soil is not growing anything anymore. My, my property got stolen. I had a Victorian tub that would be 2,468. I didn't even get to see it. And they stole my property. They stole all my property. The central broke my lock, which I called the police on because Dave Unruh told me to. He said, if you think somebody came in your house without permission, call the police. I don't think that's right. Wichita, Kansas is not supposed to be, uh, a city that wants to evict people and make them homeless. And then they give you a contractor that you don't even know. And I'm fixing the house up myself. This is not right. This is not right. I have been there frequently, like I said. I ha- I housed kids that were in drug infested alcoholic places. And I'm appalled. I'm serious. I'm going to come back here until I get answers. I don't like it. I'm hurting because of it. It was an emotional stress to me to find out my property was gone, that a guy came in my house and thought he was the central. You're supposed to let people know what's going on, not just barrel into someone's house and do all the stuff you want to do. I, I don't know. You gotta tell me. I can't, I've called, I've called Maggie Ballard about it. I've called Brandon Johnson about it. I did not appreciate it. I called Deion Lefner of the Eagle. He was trying to help me too. This community is supposed to be a loving community, but I have been treated like dirt. And I would appreciate this happen, never happened to anyone else. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Strum. City Manager Leighton, can you please address that?
Mayor, Ms. Strum's case is one that is very extensive in terms of the actions that were involved. Um, the, uh, we've put together a report, previously, um, put together a report that itemized all of the activities, the timeframe, the actions the city has taken to actually help Ms. Strum. We looked at rehabilitation of her home, found that was not cost effective. Actually, in my mind, went the extra mile to put her in safe housing and into, uh, an assisted unit. And, um, we've, um, I, I think have probably worked more to, to help her than we probably have many other clients.
Can I speak? They did not help me. They put me in Mount Carmel apartments where it was crying going on every day and night. I went to the water walk. My hotel room was broken into by somebody I didn't even know. He's full of, I'm sorry. They did not help me. I asked them, I didn't even know about really, if you want to know the truth, I did not know about it, that they were going to send the central in. So I went, overturned them, went to Dave Unruh. He used to be such a county commissioner. And I told him, and you know, that's not the way you run a community. You try to help people like I've done several times. I've helped people that are homeless. I've helped people that are in situations that they could not even live in their own home with their parents. And I got treated like dirt. And not just that. I don't even know if I want to live in Wichita anymore because of it. Because I would like, how would you like it if somebody came to your house, took pictures and stole your property? You would not like it.
Ms. Strum, uh, Councilmember Johnson and Councilmember Ballard, you said you've spoken with. Councilmember Johnson would like to speak.
Thanks, Mayor. I, I was just going to say, given the complexities of this case and privacy concerns, I think this is better discussed not at the council meeting. There's a lot of information there and I, I don't think it would be good to talk about that at the bench. Just my thoughts.
Thank you, Ms. Strum. Um, I'm sure city manager, would you like to speak with her afterwards? Or if someone from staff would like to speak with Ms. Strum? Um, again, she wants a response. And I know that there have been multiple responses from the city, but she is still here asking for another response. Thank you. Mr. Clerk, can you please call the next individual?
Joseph Tex Dozier, a few, hopefully at least one helpful thoughts from Tex.
Mr. Dozier? I see none. Mr. Clerk, can you please call the next individual?
Derek Jackson, please support.
Thank you, thank you, thank you for allowing me this opportunity to vent a couple of things that's on my heart. One of them is to thank Mr. Johnson. One day I came to speak and he said something to me, I didn't hear him.
Excuse me, sir, could you go closer to the microphone? We can't.
Doug heard him and let me know if somebody said something to you. So I turned around to Mr. Johnson's. He looked me in my eyes and he said, I'm sorry for your loss. That's enough for me, me, without nobody soliciting me to sue or do anything that is against my belief system. I thank Mr. Johnson. I said, I, I thank you for truth and I thank you for being a, what they call a, a human being. I also apologize for my mistake. I made a mistake with the, the magistrates in understanding what was going on. And therefore it's my fault that it was not settled. And so therefore I personally absolved the officers involved in my wife's case. Do you understand what absolve means? I personally absolv and it would not be any other action taken, not in my name or not in the name of my wife's estate. You know what peace is? I sent something to a person that I believe will give me what I need. It's a kind of a mantra, satorai, I call it, it's a prayer. I sent to Donald Trump. I'm a Republican. I don't vote. I'm not very, um, political, but I do believe in going to the temple sometime, more science temple with McGee Bay and I want to do the right thing in all times. So forgive me of my past, um, mistakes and misunderstanding that Nicole Coop had made it very clear to me from Topeka. And I thank her, I'm not asking for anything. I thank you for your time, Ms. Mayor. Excuse me. I thank you for your time and especially thank you, Mr. Johnson, for your words of encouragement and your, thank you for your loss. It's enough for me. I do not bring any other charges against the city of Wichita. I do not allow anybody to bring any charges in my name and let it go. My, my family, we're going to be all right, we're going to be all right. Thank you very much. Oh, one other thing, uh, my doctor, um, Hufford, uh, I miss him. He's a real person. I didn't know he had, I didn't know. But do you have any questions for me? No. Thank you, have a pleasant rest of the week. And this word's coming from me, um, of a age, of age. And, um, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Jackson. We have room for one more individual to speak. I see none, I'll bring it back. Mr. Clerk, can you please call the next item?
Consent agenda items one through 21.
Are there items to be pulled? I see none. I will move to approve consent agenda items one through 21.
Second.
Motion and a second, any further discussion? I see none. Mr. Clerk, please open the roll. Motion passes seven zero. Mr. Clerk, please call the next item.
Board of Bids and Contracts stated May 12th, 2025.
Morning. Mayor, City Council, Josh Laber, Department of Finance. The Board of Bids and Contracts convened yesterday, May 12th, 2025 for the following items. For engineering, we have the water main extension, water distribution system and stormwater drain number 525, sanitary sewer and paving to serve Pegasus and Pegasus Second Edition, rejecting all bids. We have the water distribution, stormwater drain, sanitary sewer, offsite sanitary sewer and paving to serve Swainy Farm Edition Phase One, reject all bids. We have the 2025 sidewalk maintenance for South Central Ceiling LLC for a bid of 709,525 dollars. We have the 2024 Dirt Street Paving Phase Two for Conspec Incorporated doing business as Kansas Paving for an aggregate bid of 360,820 dollars. We have the 2025 Outsource Pavement Preservation Program, CIP Concrete Street Repair Phase One for Conspec Incorporated doing business as Kansas Paving awarded to the engineer's estimate of 432,000 from the original bid of 359,346 dollars. We have the 2025 Outsource Paving Preservation Program Joint and Crack Seal Phase One for Circle C Paving and Construction for 209,554 dollars and 40 cents. We have the 2025 Sanitary Sewer Rehabilitation Phase A for Institute, Institute to Form Technologies USA LLC in the amount of 417,026 dollars. We have the waterline extension at Hoover and Robinson and Hoover and Curtis for Barclay Construction LLC for 105,045 dollars. For purchasing, we have the asphalt cold mix for APAC Kansas Incorporated for 135 dollars a ton with an estimated annual usage of 230, 229,500 dollars. We have the sand, gravel, rock, mud balls, topsoil, filter and other miscellaneous materials change order for A Plus Logistics, Logistics LLC for an estimated amended amount of 220,000. This is how to become a vendor with the city. This is our purchasing calendar of events with small business resource partners occurring in the community. These are open public opportunities out on the street today. And I'd be happy to try to answer any of your questions and I recommend your approval.
Thank you, Josh. We'll begin with Councilmember Tuttle.
Thank you. Thank you, Josh, for being here today. Thanks for all you do. I always appreciate all your work for you and your team. Um, could you go to slide nine for me, please?
Sure.
Thank you. I don't know if I've seen one like this before, so just, it, did, what happened? If you can explain how we went from 359,000 to 432,000?
Sure. So I'm going to need the city engineer on. So I'm going to need the city engineer on this, but the...
That's okay. You probably don't need to go into that much detail. I'm just curious, what happened?
Yeah, the procurement process was that we completed the bid process and solicitation process. The bid came in for the original bid of $359,346. The city engineer within their processes, they can request or they're requesting the awarding within the engineer's estimate being above what they bidded. So they are awarding additional work, but those fixed unit prices, they are going to review within the contract management process.
Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you. You did great. You didn't need an engineer.
I actually do have a follow-up question. Does that mean that there will be additional lane miles that will be repaired?
Great question. I am definitely going to need city engineers to speak to that.
It could if, as long as we're still within the engineer's estimate. It depends how much, as we begin repairing the concrete streets, how far, if we have additional quantities that we need to. But if not, then we will move on to additional street segments, yes.
So it's up to $432,000? And it could be a certain number of miles that we want?
It depends upon, right, correct. Now, however, we could find one of the streets that might need more work. So we could use those quantities to complete that work within that existing street segment.
Thank you. Councilmember Ballard.
Oops, sorry. Nine is the slide I was going to ask about.
I see no further questions. I will move to approve the Board of Bids and Contracts dated May 12, 2025.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? I see none. Mr. Clerk, please open the roll. Motion passes seven zero. Mr. Clerk, please call the next item.
Petitions for public improvements.
Good morning, Mayor, City Council members. Paul Gunswin, Public Works and Utilities, for the record. I have new and revised petitions for your consideration this morning. The signatures on the petitions represent 100% of the improvement districts and the petitions are valid per Kansas statute. That's an addition located in District Two. The project will provide water, stormwater drain, sanitary sewer and paving improvements required for new residential development. Revised petitions, Pegasus Edition located in District Two on October 10, 2023, March 5, 2024 and December 3, 2024. The city council approved water drainage, sewer and paving improvements required for new residential development. Project was bid on April 4, 2025 with bids for drainage and paving exceeding the engineer's estimate. Therefore, the developer has submitted revised drainage and paving petitions with increased budgets so that the project can be rebid and that project will rebid later this month. And with that, as recommended, to approve the new and revised petitions and budgets, adopt the new and amending resolutions and authorize the necessary signatures. And I will stand for questions.
Thanks, Paul. Any questions? I see none. I move to approve the petition for public improvements.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? I see none. Mr. Clerk, please open the roll. Motion passes seven zero. Mr. Clerk, please call the next item.
Public hearing and request by WAM 4200 LLC for approval of a letter of intent to issue industrial revenue bonds.
Honorable Mayor, Members of Council, Troy Anderson, Assistant City Manager. So this item was laid over from last week. The project has just continually evolved, as is the case a lot of times with a lot of these economic development projects. And so we're here today with a little more detail on exactly what the applicant is proposing. Again, a little bit of background. WAM 4200 is an LLC that was formed in 2024 specifically for managing projects such as this. They are managed by WAM Capital and they've been in and around commercial rental real estate for many, many years and has a long history of success in and around the industry locally. More specifically, they are requesting issuance of approximately $5 million in revenue bonds for the acquisition and remodel of three existing buildings located at 4200 West Harry. What's unique and different about today's information versus what was presented to you all last week is WAM 4200 is now committing to not only making the $2 million in renovations, but they're also committing creating five new jobs associated with aircraft parts and auxiliary equipment manufacturing. So with that being said, the city's economic development guidelines allow for tax abatement and sales tax exemption on existing buildings that have been vacant for at least two years. So when we took the additional job creation that they were proposing in addition to the capital investment, we ran that through sort of the matrix within the guidelines and we've identified that the project qualifies for an 80% property tax abatement. That's made up of 40% based on new capital investment between a million and $5 million and 30% to new jobs and 10% for creating jobs in a regional growth plan sector. This information, for the most part, has remained the same as we presented last week, that the property, the appraised value was a little more than $3 million. The assessed value, a little more than $750,000 and the general tax obligation as it stands today was about $88,000. With that being said, the estimated value of the 80% abatement for the first full year is approximately $65,000. That is made up of city, about $20,000, county, about $17,000, state, just under $1,000, 259, about $26,000. Like I said, additionally, the project is eligible for sales tax exemption on that sort of $2 million worth of capital investment. The proxima value of the sales tax exemption is about $75,000. That remains unchanged from last week with the city share being approximately $5,800. So we went back to with the creation of and the commitment to the creation of five new jobs, we went back to Wichita State University, Center for Economic Development and Business Research. They reran the model for the cost benefit analysis. So we have new numbers on the cost benefit ratios. More specifically, city of Wichita, 1.42 to 1, which also includes general fund, 1.37 to 1, debt service fund, 1.53 to 1, county, 1.32 to 1, 259, 1.23 to 1, and state of Kansas, 5.2 to 1. So here's our standard disclaimer. IRBs are a mechanism for achieving a sales tax exemption and/or property tax abatement. In the transaction, the city is not lending any money and bears no risk. The company is required to acquire all of its own financing. So there are no taxpayer dollars at risk. All costs are borne by the company requesting the use of the bonds. The applicant is, has agreed to pay all costs of issuing the bonds and agrees to pay the annual origination fees. Bonds will be purchased by WAM 4200 or a related entity. So once the capital investment is made and the bond documents are prepared for the issuance of bonds, they will be initially prepared by outside bond council. But obviously, the city's law department at that time will review and approve the final form prior to the issuance of any bonds. With that being said, last week, you all opened the public hearing and allowed for public comment. So we recommend that city council continue to receive public comment as part of that continued public hearing. But then after all public comment has been received, close the public hearing, adopt the resolution and authorize the necessary signatures. Again, we do have a representative from the applicant here today to answer any questions and otherwise I'll stand for questions.
Thank you, Troy. Councilmember Glasscock.
Thank you, Mayor. Troy, this wasn't in the green sheet, but I just want to confirm with you. I think on page two of the contract, section four, it talks about that this will be a 10-year abatement with a five and five. Just confirming that, because it wasn't presented in the green sheet or the presentation.
That's correct.
I have further questions regarding that. So is this a typical where we have a five and five with an 80% tax abatement? Usually, the one that we saw the week before was a 90% abatement and then a 50% abatement. Can you explain that?
Yeah, so what was presented to you all last week was modeled under sort of a different formulary, right? That's the 95 for five years and the 50% for years six through 10. So this, with the commitment to the job creation, right? We can now look at how that impacts the cost benefit analysis, number one. And then number two, we can calculate that at a rate, sort of a constant rate across the 10 years. Regardless of which formulary we run that through, there's the five-year evaluation, right? And so at that five-year evaluation, we'll do the look back. Did they create, did they make the capital investment that they said they were going to make? Did they create the jobs that they said they were going to create? And at that point in time, we'll bring that back to you. That's pretty standard protocol on all of these applications, right? That we'll bring those back to you. Yep, they satisfied all the criteria and that's when they get authorization to continue to get that abatement for years six through 10.
I would be interested in asking staff from more of a long-term project. I'd like to see that five-year review be open to the public to see on the website so that they can see that the folks who asked for that abatement did meet their requirement and that's why they're being granted an additional five years.
Mayor, if I can, I want to make a few comments to supplement what Troy said and then I'll get to that point as well. I just want to clarify what Troy outlined for you is that originally, when this came to you, this was under the spec warehouse and manufacturing program. We worked with Councilmember Glasscock, also with the partnership. I think all of us got to the point where we weren't comfortable going under the spec program and that's why you saw the 90% and then 50% previously. We're under a more traditional approach now, but it still falls under the preface that you have a building that's been vacant for at least two years. But we are looking at the more traditional program. Council amended that a few years ago. It used to be that it was a straight up 100% abatement. Now, there are various categories and Troy referenced those in his slide so that it, if you're in each of the categories, there is a certain percentage of abatement that's attached to those categories. And so it's not necessarily just a straight 100% any longer. And they have to move forward and basically help our economy, especially on the diversification piece, which I think was the last criteria that Troy showed. Going back to your item, we have a requirement to bring back to the council the five-year look back on all of our projects. We've had a little bit of a staff shortage over the last few months, but now that we're getting more people back into Troy's office, we'll be bringing those forward, the look backs and be able to report that information to the council. More than happy to put it on the website afterwards as well.
I would like that for greater transparency and ease of access of that information. We do appreciate the economic development that this provides for our community and eventual greater property taxes that are collected. But there is a reason why there are abatements and so again, I would like that information public. The second question I had was on slide 38. I mentioned this before and I'd like to reemphasize this again. The and/or, I would like to put greater emphasis on the or rather than the and. I do believe that sometimes to make things work or pencil, you need the and. But I think the first option should always be the or so that developers understand that they need to come up with the greater risk versus the abatement being the crutch. And so can we, I guess, have some sort of policy that talks about or has to be the first thing that is presented and not the and?
So we've been talking kind of a lot about economic development policy and guidelines. In fact, you may recall that, you know, we went through a three-part series last year about kind of updating our economic development policies and guidelines. And so we're certainly open to having that conversation, especially when we bring back to you a revised version as the city manager alluded to, right? We've been a little short-staffed of late. But at this point in time, as we start to get ramped back up, we're definitely going to put it back on your radar of bringing those economic development guidelines back. Based on the conversations we had last year through that three-part series as well as these ongoing conversations that we've had over the last several weeks and months, we'll be more than happy to bring that information back to you.
Thank you, Troy. And since you mentioned that the applicant has a representative here, I'd like that representative to just come forward and just share what they hope to have in this vacant building that has been vacant for the last two years. What is the hope for this in terms of economic development?
Thank you, Mayor Wu and council members. My name is Chris Madsen. I'm a vice president at WAM Capital. And our hope with this is to bring in aircraft manufacturing-related businesses, new expansion into the Wichita market, including new employees and new economic benefits. So that's kind of our hope. And we have other tenants, obviously, as well that we work with. So if that doesn't work out, we hope to bring other new jobs potentially.
Thank you very much, Chris.
Thank you.
I see no further questions for Chris or Troy. We'll open it up or continue public comment.
Good morning, Mayor, Members of the Council. Andrew Nave with Greater Wichita Partnership, 505 East Douglas Avenue. Thank you for the discussion this morning and the consideration of this item and really continuing the conversation on our economic development policy and guidelines. We, the partnership, obviously, very much looks forward to engaging with you all and providing feedback and input into that process as we did before. The manager referenced kind of the update to the policy from 2018 and 2019. So it has been a minute since we've really kind of rolled up our sleeves and dug deep into that policy. So very much look forward to that. I wanted to just use just a very brief minute, not even four minutes, to highlight the, kind of the environment of where we were in 2018 and 2019 and some of the background as to why that two-year vacancy provision was so important and brought into discussion, but is also still needed today. So we were in a completely different real estate environment than kind of pre-COVID and we really lacked available industrial product. We had almost no available large-scale industrial product in the community at that time. We had a number of great sites and places to build on, but no existing building of scale, or at least very little of it at that time. And then certainly the COVID pandemic came, but a number of the, and changed the real estate environment for sure. But a number of the provisions that this body and the previous council put in place helped effectuate the growth of our industrial market. Some of that was the spec program, which has been mentioned. But I would argue the two-year vacancy provision, while not having been utilized a lot, that program is really important because it provides an advantage and an opportunity for the older building stock, our olding inventory, which we have millions of square feet of, to be able to be put into profitable and habitable use, economic development use, which is what this is doing. So we were really encouraged by that. We strongly encourage that. There's definitely tweaks and adjustments that we would like to see and that we would love to talk with you all about with the incentive policy going forward. But that need of industrial space, I would argue, is needed now more than ever. I pulled our database, our notes from the partnership this morning. Over the last year, we have roughly 160 projects total that we've been tracking over the several years. But just in the last year, we've had 14 inquiries that are over 100,000 square feet, just industrial buildings, just looking at existing buildings, not looking to build a new building, just to look at an existing building. We've had 10 requirements that are over 140,000 square feet, which is what this building is. We had 10 opportunities that we didn't have very many options. Today, in Wichita, there's only two properties, four lease, a third that might be available on sublease, but really two properties on market that have this much square footage. And they're both in the northeast corner of the community. We have really nothing of scale at all on the west or the southwest side of the city. So we're really encouraged by this proposal. WAM Real Estate is certainly well-known and well-respected and one of the best developers, kind of homegrown developers we have in our community. So we're really encouraged by that. Again, look forward to engaging with you all in further economic development discussions. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Andrew. Any further public comment? I see none. We'll close public comment and bring it back to the bench. Councilmember Johnson.
Thanks, Mayor. Semi-related to this, but also unrelated. Given what Andrew just said, not to put more work on your plate, Troy, I do think we should... work on your plate, Troy, I do think we should revisit those policies sometime this summer or fall. I think just looking at the fact that we don't have enough existing square footage is a big deal, and if there are some reuse opportunities, maybe some incentive that we can create or modify might help that. So, anytime this summer or fall, that would be great.
Councilmember Glasscock.
Thank you, Mayor. I echo Councilman Johnson's comments in that this is our opportunity to set a precedent today of how we establish maybe reuse of these buildings in the future, and I'm encouraged by it. I want to thank Chris, Andrew, Troy, and also the manager for working through this process and getting to a yes, and I think a better product than where we started. And so I'm very thankful that this came back and that we worked through a deferral to make sure that there was a more tangible benefit to taxpayers, that there are jobs attached to it, especially with an abatement. And I think this was an example of a process that worked itself out through a lot of input. So, I'm thankful for that. Hopefully, we can replicate this. I'm biased, but District Four is the aviation core of the aviation capital. ICS is the industrial core of the city as well, and so I'm hopeful that these projects and more of these projects can take place along West Street, can take place along that corridor, and also further in the district. And thank you for taking the risk of business and just taking a risk for Wichita as well. So with that, seeing nobody else is on the bench unless the mayor's comments, I recommend that we close the public hearing, adopt the resolution, and authorize the necessary signatures.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? I see none. Mr. Clerk, please open the roll. Motion passes, 7-0. Mr. Clerk, please call the next item.
Wichita Employees Retirement and Police and Fire Retirement Systems Actuarial Valuation Reports as of December 31, 2024.
Good morning. I'm Mark Manning with the Department of Finance, and today I want to present to you the actuarial reports for our retirement systems here at the City of Wichita. So as you know, we actually have two retirement systems, the Wichita Employees Retirement System, which provides retirement benefits primarily for our civilian employees, and we also have the Wichita Police and Fire Retirement System, which is designed to provide retirement benefits for our commissioned and public safety employees. We are very fortunate here in the City of Wichita. Our pension system and our pension funds are in very good shape. In fact, we're positioned better than many other public pension plans in the United States. Why is that? Well, generally because we follow at least three strategies. We have a very diversified and a very well-managed portfolio. We hire a lot of really smart money managers, and we keep a close eye on them, and they do a very good job for us. We also make sure that the assumptions in our system are appropriate, and those are very important because that allows us to make sure that we are funded appropriately. And finally, probably most importantly, is the last bullet. One reason we are in very good shape is because for many, many years, the city council has committed to fully funding our retirement systems based on the actuarial recommendation for contribution rates, and that's very, very meaningful to the system. So each year, we have an actuary that reviews both of our plans. They're going to calculate a lot of metrics, two I'll call to your attention. One is the funded ratio, which simplistically is a measure of the strength of our system, and they're also going to calculate the required city contribution rates from an actuarial basis. And today, we will ask you to receive and file the report, but also to approve the contribution rates for 2026. So with that, I'll introduce our actuaries that we have here today with us from Chiron. We have Janet Cranna, and we also have Jake. Jake is very skilled as an actuary, and he has one skill that I do not have, and that is the ability to pronounce his last name, so I'm going to let him take care of that
Thank you, Mark. Good morning, Mayor Wu and city council members. I'm Jake Lebowski with Chiron, and my partner Janet's with me as well. We're the actuaries for the city's two retirement systems, and today we'll be presenting the results of this year's actuarial evaluation. The purpose of the valuation is to calculate the assets and liabilities of each system and the funded ratio, which is the ratio of the assets to the liabilities. We also calculate, as Mark alluded to, the city's contribution rate for next year, so this year's results calculate the city's contribution rate for 2026. As part of that process, we review the system's experience, both the demographic experience, what participant behavior has been, and the financial experience, what investment returns have been for the systems. We not only calculate the funded ratio for the current year and the city requirement for next year, but we project what those funded ratios and city contribution amounts will be in the future. It's important to know not just where you're at today, but where you're headed in the future, and so we keep an eye on that as well. And of course, we are responsible for identifying and letting the plan sponsor know of the risks of the plan, because there are risks, and I'll talk about that more a little bit later. This slide shows the, how the actuarial valuation process works. This is a graphic from the Harvard Business Review in 1965, and not much has changed in pension systems over the last 60 years. The size of the tank is calculated each year. It represents the liabilities of the fund. Ideally, we want the tank to be full, but the asset line or the green area in the tank represents the assets, not necessarily the scale. And so ideally, the tank is full, but it's not always necessary, and the difference between the assets in the tank and the top of the tank is that unfunded liability that has to get paid down over time. The assets of the system are funded by both city contributions and the member contributions, as well as investment earnings also add significantly to the assets of the system. And those assets are used to pay retirement and survivor benefits to retirees and beneficiaries of former city workers, as well as the cost of administering the plan. And so each year, we recalculate the size of the tank and compare it against the assets of the system, and we adjust the nozzle on that city contribution rate to make sure that the systems are being appropriately funded over the long term. This year's valuation includes new assumptions and methods that were recently approved by both boards of trustees, and those assumptions and methods were based on recommendations by us. Every three to five years, we perform what's called an experience study, where we review the experience of the systems and compare it to the assumptions that are in use, and kind of adjust the assumptions to make sure that they're reasonable and appropriate looking forward. Two notable assumption changes were changes to mortality rates and future salary increases. The prior mortality rates were a bit outdated, and so we refreshed them to the most recent publicly available table. And future salary increases, there's been some larger salary increases than expected over the last few years, and so we're expecting those to continue for at least a couple more years. There were notably no change to the investment return assumption, which is one of the assumptions that has the largest driver to the cost of the plan. That remains at seven and a quarter percent assumed return each year. The funded ratio for the employee plan decreased slightly from 89% to 88%, while the ratio for the police and fire plan increased slightly from 86% to 87%. That unfunded liability, that's the difference in the tank, that's not the shortage between the asset line and the top of the tank, that grew slightly for both plans. For the employee plan, it grew about $16 million, and for police and fire, it grew about $2 This page here, 53, shows the calculation of the city's contribution rate for next year. At the top of the table, we show the total normal cost rate. Normal cost is the cost of benefits for all the active employees in the plan that are accruing one more year of service. And so for the employee plan, it was 14.6%, and for police and fire is 25.2% of payroll. Of course, the members contribute part of that, and so the city's portion is less at 9.9 and 18.2. And then the next line is that UAL. The UAL is that unfunded actuarial liability. It's the gap in the tank, and this contribution rate goes to kind of filling that gap over time. And so combined, the total contribution rate for the employee plan is 17% of payroll, and for police and fire, it is 28% of payroll. This next page shows how that contribution rate changed from last year to this year. The top of the table shows last year's contribution rates for both systems. It was 15.6% and 27.9% respectively. There were positive investment gains in 2024. The markets did well, and so that reduced the contribution rate slightly. There were what we call liability losses. Demographic experience was unfavorable, primarily due to higher salary increases than expected, which increases the liability. Members are going to receive larger pension benefits at retirement because of the higher salaries, and it increases liability accordingly. The assumption and method changes had a notable increase for the WER plan, the employee plan, of 1.5% and a slightly less increase for the police and fire plan. There were some other changes as well that resulted in the employee plan contribution rate increasing 1.4% of payroll, and the police and fire plan contribution rate increasing 0.1% of payroll. Page 55 shows a 10-year history of the contribution rates, where the police and fire plan is the gold line and the employee plan is the blue line, and it shows fluctuations year over year. They tend to be relatively minor year over year, but you can see the last few years, they've had increases for both plans, primarily due to the higher salary increases and some investment losses in the past that increased the cost of the plans. Page 56 shows a 10-year history of the funded ratios. Again, the police and fire is gold, and the employee plan is blue. They tend to move in tandem. As the biggest driver of that funded ratio change is the investment returns on a year-to-year basis. You can see that currently, both plans are in the upper 80s, which is low relative to the history of these plans, but very strong still relative to the general US population of public pension plans, which is shown on this page 57. This slide has a lot of information, but the black squares are the police and fire plan. The gold diamonds are the employee plan, and they generally overlap, so if you can't see both, it's because they're overlapping each other. And this is showing over the last 10 years what the funded ratio has been compared to the bars. The colored bars represent the distribution of other public pension plans throughout the US. There's over 200 plans in this database that it's compared against, and the colors of the bars, the darker shades of blue and green are the middle 50% of plans in the US. And you'll note that your plans are in the light blue up at the top, and that means they're within the top 25% of plans throughout the United States. 2024, the bars aren't populated. The data's not available, as we're now presenting results, as all the other municipalities throughout the country are also presenting results. So we'll populate the 2024 bars next year when we come and present this year's, next year's information. And just to wrap up, I mentioned earlier about the risks of the plan. The valuation is based on one set of assumptions as to what's going to happen in the future, notably the seven and a quarter percent investment return each and every year. We know that's going to deviate from year to year, but hopefully over the long term, seven and a quarter is the right long-term expectation. But experience is going to deviate. You know, we can't foresee the future. If we would, we'd be very rich, obviously. So, just note that experience can affect the cost of the plan, and the key drivers of the risk for these systems are the investment risk, risk that investments won't earn seven and a quarter over the long term, interest rate risk, risk that if interest rates drop, there's going to be harder pressure on earning that seven and a quarter over the long term, longevity and demographic. You know, if there's higher pay raises, then that's going to increase the cost of the plan. If people live longer, there's going to be increased costs, as well as assumption change risk, which is basically recognizing all of those changes in one year as opposed to letting experience occur from year to year. That is all of my prepared remarks. Are there any questions?
I have a couple. Can you go to slide number 57? You talked about, you compare yourself to 200 plans, and the city's plan is in the top 25%, and I think Mark also alluded to this is one of the better pension plans in the nation. So, do you know if that has been, maybe, I don't know if it's a question for you or for someone else from the city, but does that really affect bringing new folks or retaining folks as city staff, the pension programs? And if so, are we advertising it enough? Because if this is one of the better pension plans in the nation, working for the City of Wichita provides you not just your salary, but also a pension when you retire. Can you address that?
I will address it in general terms and let others get to more specifics, but I think it definitely plays a role or should play a role in the attraction of employees because not all pension plans in the US are well-funded. You can see some of those, you know, over 25% or below 60% funded. And a lower funded ratio means that there is a greater risk that plans may not be able to make the retirement payments when people retire, and so better-funded plans should, you know, provide reassurance that their retirement is going to be secure. So I think in general terms, yes, that should be a great news if you're trying to attract and retain, and the pension plan being a good key attraction driver. But I'll open up to others if they want to add more commentary.
Last city manager, this helps with recruitment, and if so, are we really advertising that we are one of the better pension programs in the nation?
Mayor, it's a great question. We've talked a little bit about our benefit program and how it's perceived by employees and potential employees. I would tell you, just from anecdotal information, talking to some of our employees and our unions, that today's newer employee may not value a pension system as much as older employees have. And so one of the things that we're planning on doing in the next year is working with our employee groups, that's our unions, as well as the unrepresented or nonrepresented employees, to talk more about what they want in a benefit package, and how does, how do they make their decisions about not just joining our organization, but also what keeps them here? How do we retain folks, and how do we meet their needs in a way that is, I think, maybe modernized a little bit and recognize the desires of our current employee base? As you can imagine, where you are in your career determines how you value a pension system. We have always represented that we're highly funded, we're in that top group in terms of funding. I can't tell you where we stand in terms of benefits, although I'm going to guess that we do pretty well compared to other public employers in terms of the benefits in both of the pension systems upon retirement. But those are all things that we'd like to get more feedback from our employees about how we go forward with not just the pension system, but with health insurance and other benefits.
Thank you, city manager. Councilmember Johnson.
Thanks, Mayor. I was just going to say, great presentation, and you're missing a slide at the end that says, "Come work for the City of Wichita." That'd be the icing on the cake.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor Johnston.
Thank you, Mayor. Make a quick question for Mark or the city manager. How much will this add to our budget versus last year? And then, have we already anticipated that? Is it already included in your presumptions of the budget?
Yeah, you may recall, I think at our last workshop, we mentioned some of the changes that we're monitoring. Elizabeth and I always mention that, and we mentioned pension rates at that presentation, and I think we placed an approximate cost on it of about $600,000. We'll obviously refine that as we go along, but at this point, we believe it's somewhere around $600,000 out of the general fund.
Additional $600,000.
Yes, yes, sir.
Mayor, if I may, also, we do, we've created a pension reserve fund that will allow us to maybe smooth out some of the fluctuations in pension increases from the city's contribution standpoint, and we'll be looking at whether or not it's appropriate to move some money from the pension reserve in 2026 or 2027, and that'll be part of our final recommendation.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Glasscock.
Thank you, Mayor. Follow-up to that question, Mr. Manager, how much is in the reserves currently? Approximately, I don't need an exact amount.
Right now, the pension reserve, I believe, has somewhere around 8.7 million.
8.7 million?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. And last but not least, slide number 52. I just wanted to know if this is sustainable for a city our size? Since you were talking about these increases.
The change in the unfunded liability? Yes, that is not an overly significant increase. We've seen more changes in that unfunded liability numbers over the years. Just to give you an idea, the unfunded liability for the police and fire plan is about 130-ish million dollars right now, so the 2 million, while it's still $2 million, it's not a significant change. The unfunded liability for the employee plan is roughly $80 million. So it is a notable change, and that's part of the reason why the employee plan costs went up, but as long as the city continues to make the recommended contributions, the systems will continue to improve in their funding.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
I see no further questions from council members? Is Mark coming back up?
No, I can handle that, I think. So the recommendation is to receive and file the valuation reports as of December 31, 2024, and approve the 2026 employer city contribution rate.
Thank you. We will now open it up for public comment. I see none. I'll bring it back to the bench. I would like to first mention that the City of Wichita has roughly 3,000 employees, and we're grateful for them. I know that it was public servants month and week and day here recently, and so I just wanted to say thank you to the 3,000-plus staff for the City of Wichita. They're critical to accomplishing- They're critical to accomplishing the mission of providing public safety and providing infrastructure so that the city can run and that individuals can get to school and work. And I know that part of a compensation package includes salary, insurance, and obviously your retirement plan. And so I am thankful again that city staff have these added benefits. And this is something that should share, should be shared with not just our community, but others, that this is a great place to work because the pension program has been funded. Dedicated funding has been going to these pension plans, and it's one of the better ones in the nation. And so I just wanted to emphasize that again, a comprehensive salary package includes this pension program. And so I would move that we now receive and file the Wichita Employees Retirement and Police and Fire Retirement Systems Actuarial Valuation Reports as of December 31st, 2024, and approve the 2026 Employer Retirement Fund Contribution Rates.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? I see none. Mr. Clerk, please open the roll. Motion passes 7-0. Mr. Clerk, please call the next item.
Affordable Housing Fund Allocation and Sale of 47 Single Family Homes.
Good morning, Mayor and city council members. My name is Carmen Hoffine. I'm the Real Property Section Manager for the Department of Housing and Community Services, and I'm here to present the Affordable Housing Fund Allocation and Sale of 47 Single Family For a little bit of background, the city of Wichita received 72.4 million in American Rescue Plan Act, considered also called ARPA funds to support the response to and recovery from COVID-19. Investment in affordable housing was identified as a high priority for ARPA funds following extensive public engagement, and the council allocated $5 million for the creation of an affordable housing fund. On September 10th of '24, the city council allocated one, a little over $1.3 million in affordable housing funds to three affordable housing development organizations for the purchase and renovation of 33 single-family homes from the Wichita Housing Authority Public Housing Portfolio. Real estate closings on these properties were delayed due to the waiting for HUD to execute the releases of the declarations of trust, and now the reservations are currently underway. On November 5th, 2024, the city council approved a $25,972 increase in the Affordable Housing Fund and the allocation of a little, well, almost $3.7 million in affordable housing funds for the acquisition of 56 single-family homes from the Wichita Housing Authority Public Housing Portfolio. The properties were to be made available through a competitive application process, also called CAP, for the development of quality, affordable homeowner and rental units with up to $40,000 per unit in subsidy for acquisition and rehab costs. By purchasing the properties prior to the competitive application process, the city has already received the necessary declarations of trust release, releases from HUD. On January 24th of '25, a competitive application opened for the sale and renovation of the 56 properties acquired with affordable housing funds with up to $40,000 available to subsidize each property. All units purchased and rehabilitated through this program must be utilized as affordable housing upon completion of rehab, subject to the applicable affordability periods outlined in the following slide. Proposals designed whether units will be designated, I apologize, proposals designated whether units will be marketed for affordable homeownership or rental housing and were required to propose the use of one of the following programs. Affordable Housing Fund Home Ownership Downpayment Assistance Program. This assists up to 20% of the down payment and up to $2,000 in closing costs. Households at or below 80% area median income, which is also AMI, based on household size. 10-year affordability period, subject to total funds invested. The next one is the Housing Choice Vouchers, which is also known as HCV. A commitment to lease renovated units to HCV program participants for 15 years. Households at or below 50% of AMI. A $40,000 deferred mortgage at 0% interest will be filed on each property to ensure the affordable housing outcome is met. As part of this cap, developers were required to present how their projects would benefit the neighborhood and community, including fostering a healthy mix of homeownership and rental opportunities. Developers provided comprehensive per-unit specs for rehab to justify Affordable Housing Fund funding requests for each unit. Proposals were evaluated on a unit-by-unit basis, and developers were encouraged to submit proposals for all units that could be completed within 18 months of contract award. Proposals with six or more public housing units received additional bonus points on a scaled basis. Proposals were selected and recommended by the Affordable Housing Review Board based on the following factors. Development plans and project approach. Credentials, qualifications, and expertise of development team. Financial condition and performance record of applicant. Sources of financing. Affirmative marketing plans. Participation in emerging disadvantaged minority and women business enterprise. Unit development plans. Utilization of public housing unit. Feasibility of project scope, plan, and timeline. The cap received 92 qualified proposals for 47 of the 56 properties. Upon the review and scoring of the proposals, the Affordable Housing Review Board voted to approve the sale and funding of all 47 properties that received qualified proposals, including 13 properties for rehab and sale, 34 properties for rehab and rental via tenant base vouchers. The total Affordable Housing Fund award of $1,846,051 will be granted to the following. Wichita Habitat for Humanity, up to $486,501 for 13 properties specifically for rehab and sale. Hope CDC, up to $520,000 for 13 properties rehab and rental. Sempaio Capital Group LLC, up to $240,000 for six properties rehab and rental. Large Enterprise, up to $560,000 for 15 properties rehab and rental. There is no impact to the general fund. The total Affordable Housing Fund reallocation will be an amount up to $1,846,051. The remaining ARPA Affordable Housing Fund program income from the sale of the properties of a little over $1 million will be made available through a third competitive application process in the future. The law department has reviewed and approved the sales and funding agreements as to form. And before I go into the recommendations, I did want to make a note on the green sheet. Though there was an error as far as the amount of affordable housing funds, on the green sheet, it says $1,806,000, and it should be $1,846,000. There was a last-minute addition for one property. It is recommended that the city council approve the sale of the 47 properties and expenditure of affordable housing funds up to the amount of $1,846,051 allocated as follows. $520,000 to Hope CDC. $560,000 to Large Enterprise. $240,000 to Sempaio Capital Group LLC. $486,051 to Wichita Habitat for Humanity. And authorize the necessary signatures. And I will stand for questions. There is a high possibility I may defer to Sally, just so you guys are aware.
Thank you, Carmen. Councilmember Hoheisel.
Thank you, Marion. Thank you, Carmen, for your presentation and your work here. I do appreciate more the detailed explanation of the competitive application process. I do have one question, kind of, I don't know, this is adjacent to it. Could you give a little bit of background about the Housing Development Loan Program? I know that's something that's been discussed in some circles surrounding affordable housing and just how to maybe set up the infrastructure for some of these developments going on.
Yes, I have the answer in my head. So the Housing Development Loan Program, that is a big part of, so developers want to, it could either be renovate a property or build a property, and that's specific for multifamily. It could also be, yeah, it's specific for multifamily properties. And a big part of that is the LIHTAC. That's a big part of what that process is. And well, I'm going to ask Sally to come up and probably, am I saying that correctly? Hopefully I am. But I know LIHTAC is a big part of that as far as what that process is and the funding part. Go ahead.
Sally Sang, Housing and Community Services Department, for the record. So the Housing Development Loan Program is a set aside of home funds that are used specifically for affordable unit development, whether that's rental or single-family. It can be for ground-up construction or renovation. And many of our developer partners apply for that funding annually to build, we've seen, particularly seen it for single-family homeownership. But more recently, the two applications we saw come last week were for gap funding for low-income housing tax credit projects to provide that, that local low-interest loan that scores them more points and fills gaps to see those units be built. Those applications are available so long as we have funding available. The applications, we had open applications for about 15 months with funding consistently available. We did see a slowdown in applications on the homeownership side just due to the cost of rising, the rising costs related to labor and materials that especially on the single-family side, our developer partners are having a hard time, even with significant subsidy, up to $90,000 in subsidy, they're having a hard time making that work. And so we're seeing we have more funds available and dedicating more funds on the rental side.
What is the dedicated revenue for that?
That is home funds. So that comes, that is HUD allocations as an entitlement community.
That's the only source?
It is.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Carmen, I do have a couple of questions. I was looking at the application for, from Beacon Property Group, but they were denied. Is that correct? Tell us why.
So during the Affordable Housing Fund Board, we did see the presentations and we discussed that, and it, they didn't seem as a strong group. And a big part of that is Beacon and Sempaio, there were some, one of the members of Sempaio is also a part of Beacon, and just the presentation and as far as what his plan was or their plan was is a lot stronger for Sempaio than it was for Beacon.
I also saw Noble Investment Properties was disqualified. Can you talk about that, too?
Yes, he did not provide a pro forma. He didn't have that, and we did request it.
Thank you very much. I am very happy to see both homeownership as well as rental properties that are going to be available to individuals here in our community. So I like the diversity in that spread and really looking forward to the next round where you get even more individuals that want to participate. Again, housing and homelessness, we talk about this often. They are tied. These are one of our four top priorities. So thank you for making an emphasis and effort towards being part of that solution.
Thank you.
So thanks, Carmen. I see no further questions from council. We will now open it up for public comment. I see none. I'll bring it back to the bench. Councilmember Johnson.
Thanks, Mayor. Due to a personal conflict of interest, I'll be abstaining from this vote.
Councilmember Glasscock.
Thank you, Mayor. Because the majority of these projects reside in D1 and D4, I would like to make the motion that the city council approve the expenditure of the affordable housing funds up to the amount of $1,806,000, zero, $1,806,000, 806,050? Oh, a typo. Okay. I recommend the expenditure of the affordable housing funds up to the amount approved by staff in the presentation for the developers approved and authorized the necessary signatures.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? I see none. I just want to make sure that the motion that we see gets corrected to 1.846051. Motion and a second. Any further discussion? I see none. Mr. Clerk, please open the roll. Motion passes. Motion passes 6-0 with one abstention. Mr. Clerk, please call the next item.
Funding and public art for 2025 OJ Watson Park improvements.
Mayor, City Council, Tim Callums, in public work in utilities engineering. Here to talk to you about OJ Watson Park. So background here, OJ Watson Park, which is in District 3, is one of the oldest and largest parks in the park system, and it is the only fully-staffed destination park in the park system. Has a variety of amenities, and I won't read all of them, but some of the main ones to note for today are the pony rides, the paddle boats and the kayaks, and the Seasons Venue. The Seasons Venue has seen a large draw, has drawn a lot of people to OJ Watson Park. I think it is a great investment and really filled activity on that side of the park. We are seeing a lot of events and more people coming to the park as a result of that investment into the, into the space. Staff recommends increasing accessibility and mitigation of erosion around the concessions building. The concessions building is also where the offices are for city staff that are there. And again, there's a lot of this, kind of the first point of contact that we have for city staff that are there at the park with the community that comes in to the park to check in for shelter rentals or if they have an event, birthday parties, who knows exactly what all they're there for, but that's kind of the first point that they come in and start interacting with city staff. So a good first impression is always important. You can see here in the slide, in the pictures on the slide, there's erosion, significant erosion that's happening around the concessions building. You can start to see the undermining of the sidewalk there in the lower photo. Some of this is just not having the infrastructure there to help maintain or address the erosion as well as just over time, it just hasn't, I just think it hasn't really been on the top priority list to get to. We've made a lot of different improvements throughout the, throughout the park, and it's kind of time to start addressing some of the erosion issues that are out there. Again, trying to make sure that is as accessible as possible. You can see, you know, most of the pathways are pretty high up. They're not, they don't really go down to the lakes there. You can see there in that bottom photo, there is a pathway that does go down into, closer to the lakes, and that is where people use to access the kayaks and the paddle boats. So again, trying to make sure that we are being mindful of access and accessibility. So that's kind of trying to tie in multiple things to this project here to address that erosion. There is sediment that does come down. It does go down towards the dock and does get on the pathways. So again, trying to mitigate that and make it as safe as possible, knowing that the kayaks and the paddle boats are highly used. We also utilized a grant for previous funding to help improve that dock, which was ages and ages, years old. So we do have a new dock that's down there that's more accessible and more user-friendly. So making sure that we're kind of tying these all together to make a better user experience is kind of the goal with this first portion of the funds that we'd like to use or the projects we'd like to do with this project. Staff also recommends renovating the pony stables. There are seven ponies that live at OJ Watson Park. They pretty much live in this area, and then when they go out for the pony rides, they leave, but then this is kind of where they spend most of their time. You can see in some of these photos, there are, you can see standing water there in that top photo, really right next to where they, where they live and where they sleep. I think the idea was to build berms many, many years ago, to build berms around the stable to kind of protect them from wind. They never really implemented. They never really implemented infrastructure to help get that water away. So while it may be nice for wind, it does not really keep it nice and dry, which is important for those ponies. Having the prolonged puddling and muddy conditions is not, is not great for the ponies. So improving site drainage and just increasing their, the living conditions for the ponies, we feel is a great value and something that is next on the list to do. There is an art component to this that was dedicated by, or allocated or identified through design council. There is $100,000 for it and city staff will identify locations to strategically integrate the public art. We didn't feel having an art consultant made sense for this level of project. It would take away from the funds that would go towards the public art. We think that murals, sculptures or mosaic tiles throughout the park would be great. There are a number of restrooms that are just kind of white and bland. They don't really provide a sense of, sense of arrival or a sense of place for the park. That may be a great location for murals. Also, some folks do get kind of turned around in OJ Watson Park. There's actually quite a long roadway to go through and I can understand how some people may get confused. We feel that murals may be a good way to help with wayfinding and identifying something like, I don't know, the Bison restroom. It's over by the Bison restroom. Right now, it's kind of hard to understand exactly where you are, especially for first time visitors that come. Growing up, I hadn't, I didn't really go to OJ Watson Park that much, lived on different side of towns, but have intimately been going to OJ Watson as part of my job. First time there, I did get kind of confused on exactly where everything was. So I can kind of relate to some folks that do get a little twisted and turned around. So we think that public art would help identify, well, first providing some place making and wayfinding as one thing, but also enhance the overall atmosphere of the park, especially when we're start to see more people coming in for the Seasons Venue. I think it makes sense to try to help enhance their experience, want to make them repeat customers for the city and always keep coming back. There are so many different things at OJ Watson that you can't really do them all in one visit. So trying to make sure that they feel welcome to come back multiple times is kind of the goal here. And the public art will go to design council and will also come to the city council before implementation for your approval. And there'll be a call for entry to solicit the options to the art community. Plan on, you know, with the call for entry, we do have a large list of local artists that we do release that to. So hopefully we'll get quite a bit of local artists interested in it. With murals, we have a lot of different murals around town. I think that a good local artist would be a great fit for that. But again, we'd have to put the call out, the call for entry out and then go before design council and city council. So you can all approve of that before moving forward. The adopted 2025-2034 CIP contains $325,000 in 2025 for OJ Watson Park and $100,000 for public art. Staff recommends initiating those two combined for $425,000. At this time, funding sources, general obligation bonds, and law department has reviewed and approved the bonding resolutions as to form. Just recommend that city council initiate the project, adopt the bonding resolution and authorize the necessary signatures. And I'm more than happy to stand for any questions.
Thank you, Tim. Councilmember Hoheisel.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Tim, for the presentation and all your work. You do a ton of work on our parks. A couple of quick questions. When you talk accessibility, is that also considering handicap accessibility as well?
Yes, yep, that's the goal is to make sure navigation is a lot easier to and from our different amenities. So that's the plan is to help make sure it's, all the slopes meet the right criteria. It makes sense to get there. Right now, it's a little hard to, you kind of have to backtrack some ways. So it's a number of different things, but yeah, ADA accessibility is part of that.
Okay, appreciate that. Now, when we're doing the murals, is that going to be weighted towards local artists?
Yes, I think so. I think internally, that's kind of our, the push that we like to have is to make that local. I think when we go to design council, as we move forward, we can gain a little bit more feedback, maybe on exactly what they have in mind. Or if this, right here today, if you have things that you'd like for us to have in mind or criteria that you'd like for us to use, we're more than happy and open to take that now.
Okay, yeah, yeah. I think that just makes sense to support the local art community as much as we can.
Sure.
Also, I did grow up next to this park, so I am pretty familiar with it. Now, we, we had the Wizard of Oz sculptures there for a while. Is there any plans on maybe continuing to build on the Wizard of Oz theme with any of that? Or any upgrades that we're looking at with the Yellow Brick Road or anything around there? I know Senator Faust Godot has also talked about ruby slippers, but I don't think she necessarily wants them at Watson Park. But it still does make sense as well.
Sure, yeah. I hadn't, I think we're still open and thinking about that. So any feedback, so that's great to hear. If that's the direction that you like for us to pursue, then I think that's something that we can look at and explore and kind of see what comes back. And obviously, we'd present to this council and get feedback.
Okay, yeah, yeah. It was just a thought. Again, the Tin Man and Dorothy and all that back in the day and the tornado, that was always pretty neat. It's not as iconic as the Little Red Train, which, you know, is probably the most iconic thing in our park system. It actually works. It's not a rocket ship that sits there and does nothing. Never mind. All right. Well, thank you, Tim. I appreciate that.
Councilmember Johnson.
Thanks, Mayor. Tim, great presentation. Just wanted to echo support for the mural. The one at Great Plains is awesome. We had a great ribbon cutting for that and people still talk about it. I too did not live by Watson Park, so having some murals and things to point to, I think would be good for people to, like you said, be over there by the Bison bathroom or whatnot. But I think that's a good idea. I support that. I also support pushing for local artists. So looking forward to seeing what happens.
Councilmember Tuttle.
Thank you. I'm just going to pile on a little bit more. Sorry to be redundant, but Tim, great job. Thank you for all you do. Always appreciate it. One of the things that I say consistently when we're talking about projects such as this is it's not as much public art as public design, right? And I always refer people back to East Kellogg. There isn't a sculpture slapped on the side of East Kellogg, but how we designed it is what makes it inviting and vibrant and unique. And I think this is another perfect example. And I love the fact that you're going to use murals for wayfinding. That's really a win-win, right? Because we're incorporating design into making beautification efforts in this park, but it's also going to be something that's useful and helpful. We probably have to spend money on wayfinding anyway, but this way, we're able to incorporate it with also the design. So thank you for being a great thinker. I really appreciate it and thanks for all you do, Tim.
Sure, thank you.
Vice Mayor Johnston.
Well, I have to say something to Councilman Hoheisel. I did grow up going to OJ Watson Park, back when the entrance was off Broadway. When did that change?
It still is open on occasion, but about a decade ago, they opened it up on McLean with some of the improvements over there. So it's still open on the weekend. You can take that back entrance off of Kellogg.
Yeah, okay.
Well, I mean Broadway.
Good to know.
Yep.
I'm going to, instead of third, I'm going to fourth. I also grew up around OJ Watson Park and I think that that is a really great asset. You mentioned this is one of the largest parks in the city's park system. And when we think about other communities south of us, they have one park and we talk about that park often. And I'm not even going to say it because that's what they're known for, yet we have an amazing park system. But people don't just say we have an amazing park system. So I'm just curious. I know that we're going to have a park master plan coming up. And this kind of ties into the whole conversation about, you know, we have a Wizard of Oz theme down there, but there are others who think Wizard of Oz theme should be in our downtown core. And it is part of who we are as well. So I'm just curious how that cohesively can be part of the conversation because I do believe leaning into parts of who we are, whether it's the air capital of the world or part of Wizard of Oz and, you know, this is home to the Keeper of the Plains. I mean, we have a lot of things that tie to who we are, but not one thing. And so how does a park system kind of think strategically about how to cohesively bring the system together?
Sure, great question. I think one of the, one of the things that I think is kind of important for first impressions, and this is just kind of one thing that we've kind of started doing, one thing that we have, but we are improving on, is park signage. Making sure that we're creating a brand identity and making sure that we're tying all of our parks together. I think, you know, the wood signs, they, they have their appeal, but I think having something that's new and modern kind of helps identify and ties it back to the city of Wichita and kind of provides that, again, that tie and that branding standard. I think beyond that, having the same amenities, the same looking, similar shelters, there are places to go above and beyond at different locations. But when we start creating a standard specifications on how we have our parks look, I think that's a great way to help tie things together. If we have standard, you know, benches and things like that, it's a lot easier to tie them all together from just a simple thing that no one really ever pays attention to. But if you have blue benches, we're not using blue benches, but if we have blue benches in all of our parks, everyone knows that. Okay, well, that's a city park. That's not, you know, an HOA park. There's not something different. I think beyond that, I think, I think there are benefits to having unique things in each park. And I'm thinking about the different parks, kind of the, the main parks in each of your different districts that really draw people. And I think they all have their own unique things. Like South Lakes is a lot different than OJ Watson, which is different than Stryker, which is different than McAdams. They're all different. And I think that there's, there's ways to try to tie those together. I'm interested to see how the park master plan, what their thoughts are on doing that. I think simple, easy ways to do that is making sure our site amenities are the same, our signage is the same, wayfinding is pretty similar. Using similar materials tends to do that. Those are simple ways to do that. And I think in the CIP, we're doing that too in many other ways for athletic courts and athletic fields, kind of creating a standard brand or making sure that all of our playgrounds are, look the same. We're still trying to check off some of those ones that we, you know, it takes a while to get to everything, but trying to make sure that all the playgrounds look similar or have a high level of quality. Different basketball courts, we're doing a project now for the basketball courts. Years ago, we had moved and transitioned to a more like clear backboard, which is something that's kind of minor and most people don't really know or care, but it looks a lot nicer. And I think we've heard from the community that they feel, they feel more valued and they feel appreciated when they do have those nice amenities like that. It may not, it may cost maybe just a little bit more, but it provides a feeling of, of being heard and a sense of appreciation for being in those spaces. So I know that that's something that we're, we're looking, we're looking to do and make those little things that do make that difference.
Thank you, Tim. Councilmember Glasscock.
Thank you, Mayor. I think Councilman Ballard and I felt excluded that we didn't tell our OJ Watson stories too, so we both came on. But we're very appreciative of the park. I remember tons of family reunions there and I have also gotten lost there multiple times. So the wayfinding signs, I think I got locked in on the island one night when I was trying to clean it up. And so my hatred for geese actually started at OJ Watson Park as well. So very supportive of this. I think the murals are a great way to, a great and more affordable way to beautify the area. And I do love the Wizard of Oz theme. I think it's very unique to that park system. Now, we don't need that all in Wichita. Don't live a stereotype, but I think there, it makes sense. So thank you.
Sure.
Councilmember Ballard.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I was feeling left out about not sharing my OJ Watson story. So my dad did take us and of course, I wanted to ride the ponies until I got there. It's just absolutely terrifying, but Councilmember Glasscock and I went down there, I don't know, several months ago and checked on the ponies and they're still there and doing well. So yeah, I'm super excited about the improvements in this park. We know a lot of people go to Riverside, but I suppose they probably go to other parks and other districts too. So I'm excited for the project and happy for Councilmember Hoheisel.
Councilmember Johnson.
Thanks, Mayor. Just to add to the discussion, I know everyone loves the Wizard of Oz, but also Hattie McDaniel's from Wichita starred in Gone with the Wind. So there could be some themes there to highlight her being from Wichita and Gone with the Wind.
Thank you for all those questions. I do have a technical question now. How much is the total CIP for improvements in this area again?
Ooh, I don't have for District Three off the top of my head. Are you asking for just in 2025?
Just the CIP for 25 to 34.
I apologize. I do not have that number in front of me.
It's okay. Maybe from now on, for financial considerations, if we could get that full idea of what a budget for that park is in the CIP, that gives us a perspective of what additional things might be needed. Again, a suggestion for financials so that we can think more holistically. And then the other question or more a comment on Slide 85, did you mention that there will or will not be a consultant for this?
We did not feel that having an art consultant was appropriate for this size of project.
I don't think so either. So thank you very much. And I really do appreciate this specific item because we're talking about maintenance and maintaining our current assets. Obviously, OJ Watson, with all these stories that you just heard from the council and from community about such a wonderful asset that it is, we want to make sure that it is well maintained and a priority for things like ease of access for individuals with mobility issues to just finding their way around. I appreciate. So thank you for the extra effort on the maintenance piece.
Sure.
I see no further questions or comments from council. We will now open it up for public comment. I see none. I'll bring it back to the bench. This is in Councilmember Hoheisel's district.
Thank you, Mayor. It's, it really is a privilege to do some work on this park. Haunted Island, which is now Wicked Island, as part of my childhood as well. I actually take the kids there every year and I scare the crud out of them with that one. It's always fun. And who, of course, has not ridden the iconic red train that goes around there. So it's, again, it's a privilege to make this motion for the best park in Wichita. I don't care what March Park says, but, so I'd like to move that to city council, initiate the project, adopt the bonding resolution and authorize the necessary signatures.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? I see none. Mr. Clerk, please open the roll. Motion passes seven zero. Mr. Clerk, please call the next item.
Beverage services for municipal golf courses.
All right. Mayor, City, City Council, my name is Jesse Kaufman. I'm the manager of the Golf Division. And I'm here regarding the beverage services for the four municipal golf courses. So background on this, we have four golf courses that are operated by the Golf Division of the Wichita Park and Recreation. The beverage service contract supplies non-alcoholic beverages for the snack bars, allowing for better cost, use of coolers in the, in the equipment, delivery of products and easy ordering procedures. Services over the last five years have been provided by Pepsi Beverage Company. Analysis, a request for proposals was sent, was issued to solicit vendors for this service. The current vendor, Pepsi, was the only vendor to submit a proposal. And on March 6th of this year, the staff screening and selection committee conducted an interview and determined that Pepsi met all of the criteria to proceed as the selected vendor. Pepsi offered competitive rates in its proposal, offering lower rates than the previous contract. And as part of the proposed contract, the Golf Division will receive an annual rebate of $11,500 at the start of each year as well as $1,000 in marketing and promotional materials annually. Financial considerations, a contract has been prepared with Pepsi for set prices per unit for an extensive product portfolio. And in 2024, the Golf Division spent $145,496 with Pepsi. Actual annual expenditures will vary based on golf course snack bar sales and funding is available within the adopted golf fund budget. Legal considerations and recommended action, the law department has reviewed and approved the contract as to form. And it is recommended that the city council approve the vendor selection, approve the contract and authorize the necessary signatures. And with that, I will stand for any questions.
Thank you, Jesse. Councilmember Ballard.
Thank you, Mayor. Jesse, thank you for being here. I'm sorry, this is a redundant question I ask all the time, but do you have any idea why Pepsi is the only one that submitted a proposal?
I do not. We had sent, I know we had made others aware and they were the only one that submitted. And from my understanding, five years ago, they were also the only ones that submitted. So. So I don't know the reason why, but it's, seems like it's happened the last two times.
Interesting. Thank you very much.
Vice Mayor Johnston.
Thank you, Mayor. Jesse, just, I want to just thank you for doing a great job. Golf courses are looking better and better. Your staff is wonderful, very welcoming, customer service oriented. So I appreciate that. Thank you very much.
I appreciate that.
Pin placement sometimes a little tough, but.
It's just for you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jesse. I see no further questions for you. We'll now open it up for public comment. I see no public comment. We'll bring it back to the bench. This is in Districts One, Four and Six. If any council member would like to move it.
I will. I move to take the recommended action to approve the vendor selection, approve the contract and authorize the necessary signatures.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? I see none. Mr. Clerk, please open the roll. Motion passes seven zero. Mr. Clerk, please call the next item.
Ice center management change.
Good morning, Mayor and Councilor. Reggie Davidson with Parks and Rec. Here to talk with you about the ice management contract, give you a little background on it. In 2021, the Department of Parks and Recreation issued a request for a proposal for solicit a company to manage the Wichita Ice Center. In January 18th of 2022, City Council approved a professional management services agreement with REIT Management Services. The initial term continues through December 31st of 2026 with the potential for five annual extensions at the city's option. RMSC's owners currently retiring and transitioning RMSC management to Sports Facilities Company, SFC. Staff has performed due diligence in investigating FSC to ensure that it will be a good fit for continuing the professional management services agreement for the Wichita Ice Center. The following is a summary of the due diligence that was performed. FSC provided qualification document outlining its expertise in sports facility management, expertise in ice arena management, as well as other types of facilities, listing of other managed ice skating venues of similar size, as well as top leadership resumes and a transition timeline for the first 90 days. Additional analysis, Parks and Rec obtained positive references from two FSS, FSC managed facilities similar to the Wichita Ice Center. One was Morristown Landing in Morristown, Tennessee, Legends Event Center in Bryan, Texas. References worked with FSC for over the last year and according to them that they met and exceeded the goal set for the requirements of the agency. And the references indicated FSC worked closely with internal staff, outside contractors and customers, and has maintained a good communication throughout the relationship. FSC provided a certificate of good standing from the Kansas Secretary of State's office, also disclosed any current pending civil, civil litigations. And current RMSC staff at the Ice Center will remain the current regional manager and also maintain all the current staff that's currently in place would have mental impact on current operations. So legal considerations and financial consideration is compensation for the professional management service will remain the same and will continue to be issued from the ICE RINQ fund. The Law Department has reviewed the professional management service agreement with RMSC and has determined that it will allow RMSC to assign the obligations on the agreement to another party by the city's consent, which shall not be reasonably withheld for the terms of the agreement to benefit the buying RMSC successors, affiliates and assigns. The Law Department has reviewed and approved the contract assigned as to form. It is recommended that the City Council approve the contract assignment and authorize the necessary signatures. And I will stand for any questions.
Reggie, thank you. Councilman Glasscock.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Quick question for you, Reggie. Given previous operators at this facility, I am interested in Item Four where it says SFC disclosed its, its current pending civil litigation. How many cases are there that wasn't in our packet? And I know that they may not be able to talk about specifics of their litigation, but are they in a lot of active suits? Is that just standard procedure that we have on here that there's just a fourth bullet for it? Could you offer any context?
Sure. So it is part of our due diligence just to make sure that there aren't any pending litigations. And through the research that we did have, there were some that were there, but they were normal things that were maybe related to operations where a triple fall or something of those natures, not anything that was, anything that was considered negligence on their behalf, just part of operations where there may be an injury.
Okay, thank you. I really appreciate that.
I don't know if this question was asked, but how much is the actual professional management services compensation?
So what we pay them for the fee is $6,500 per month. And then they manage the fund that is there from the RINQ system itself and report to us monthly on what those expenses are. And we monitor really closely with our finance department to see that they're on task to, to stay within those guidelines.
Thank you very much. I have no further questions and none from the councils. We'll open it up for public comment. I see none. We'll bring it back to the bench. This is in Councilmember Glasscock's district. Councilmember Hoheisel.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to point this out to the public. We do have a termination due to lack of funding appropriation clause in here that if they're not putting the appropriate money and care into the system, we can give them 90 days notice and cancel the contract. And it sounds like this will be about a year and a half, kind of a trial project with this group. So I hope we have nothing but good things to say here in a year and a half when this comes back to us for an extension. That's all I have. Thank you.
Councilmember Glasscock.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm also hopeful that the current management's staying in place. I noticed that in this agreement, they've been incredible to work with and somebody that I've relied on to have a lot of conversations with the Ice Center. I think I've taken care of, taken care of it very appropriately as well. So with that and seeing that there is nobody else on the board, I move that the City Council approve the contract assignment and authorize the necessary signatures.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? I see none. Mr. Clerk, please open the roll.
I, sorry, I don't know. It's frozen.
All good. Motion passes seven zero. Mr. Clerk, please call the next item.
Funding for water reuse alternatives study.
Good morning, Mayor and Councilmembers. Gary Janson, Public Works and Utilities. I'm excited to be here to have this discussion about the future of water supply and resiliency for our community and our region. I have members of our consultant design team, CDM Smith, with me. And at some point here later in the presentation, I'm going to introduce Sarah and have her talk to you a little bit about what CDM brings to this effort. So the item before you is a request for funding and contract approval for a water reuse alternative study. You will see as we go through this presentation, it's a lot more than just a study. This includes implementation of state regulations, robust public engagement, identification of funding sources, potential pilot and demonstration projects that will allow better public engagement and understanding. So a lot of things happening with this. I wanted to start with something that you've seen before that I've talked about. As I've been out, especially in 2025 and engaging with the public in numerous places, all the district advisory boards, numerous HOAs, actually had the discussion with the Andover City Council just last night about these particular efforts and what we're talking about for long-term water resiliency. I get asked a question a lot about what is Wichita doing? We hope that you're not just sitting back and waiting for it to rain. And needless to say, we are not doing that. So I wanted to set the foundation again of where we're at with our current water supply, the things that we've done, the options that we've looked at, and why we think this makes sense to move forward with this item that is before you today. So Chenee Reservoir, as everybody's aware, is kind of the source of our, not kind of, but is the source of our problem with this ongoing drought. And our secondary water resource is the Equisbeds Aquifer. We've talked a lot about what we have done with our recharge efforts for the Equisbeds over the years. The council's committed considerable funds as part of our rate structure to establishing and continuing our ASR program. It's kept the Equisbeds Aquifer healthy. It's currently 92% full. It's pretty remarkable considering the drought that we have been through for this length of time. While we, we have, still have ongoing efforts within the Equisbeds for building additional recharge basins, which are going to optimize being able to refill the Aquifer, if you will. We believe the point where we get past these current efforts with these recharge basins, that additional funding within the Equisbeds will not provide the return on investment we've previously seen. And so it makes even more sense to start looking in different directions for what our new water sources might be. We also have, sometimes it's not shown on this map, and sometimes I forget to mention, we do have water rights along the Ark River near our current water treatment plant, what we call our local well field. Currently, our CIP includes funding to optimize those wells also so that we can realize all of our water rights in that location. So I think we've done a really good job to optimize and utilize what our native water rights are. We've obviously have all the water rights within Chenee. We have a certain amount of water rights within the Equisbeds. We've got the local well field. There's two other items that come up quite a bit that I wanted to talk about real quick. And you've heard me talk about these two, but I wanted to hit on this again because again, everywhere I go and the people I talk to, I still hear these same questions, which is good to hear. It certainly helps to be able to have those interactions. Eldorado Lake is not far away. I get asked the question a lot, why don't we get water from Eldorado? I won't spend a lot of time on it. I'll just mention what I've mentioned to you again. We've conducted numerous studies over the years that shows when we get into some point in time in a regional drought, the water is just not available from Eldorado. There are some water rights available. Eldorado provides water to other places in the region than just Eldorado, but there is just not enough water to be sustainable to provide a supply for Wichita, especially when you look at the cost of conveyance and what that return on investment would be. It's, it's a very small amount of water and for a very short period of time, depending on where we're at in the drought. So it's not a viable source. I still get asked the question a lot about, why don't we dredge Chenee? Make a bigger hole so that when we rain, we get back to the original capacity and we've got more water to use. City Council has done a tremendous job over the years of providing funding for watershed protection measures. We work with McPherson County. We work with the Chenee Lake groups to provide protection within the upstream of the reservoir in the Nenasko River Basin that limits the sedimentation into Chenee. A study was completed by the Kansas Water Office, the last one that was done for Chenee, showed that lost capacity was five to seven percent, which is pretty amazing for as long as the reservoir's been there. Give you some perspective, Tuttle Creek Reservoir in Manhattan currently has lost over 50% capacity due to sedimentation. So we're in a great place to try to dredge that small amount of sediment. Tremendous cost, very little return, would only gain us maybe an extra month of water supply. So it's not a viable option either. We've looked there. We will continue to look for other options with the way that water rights are appropriated across not just our state, but many states. You know, I hear from a lot of folks about, why don't you go grab water somewhere else? There's not a lot of options for additional water rights, but I think we've done a really, really good job with being strategic and optimizing our water rights. And without our drought response plan that we have in place and the things that we've done, we would be in a lot worse shape right now continuing, considering how long this drought has gone on. But I'm excited about the next steps that, that we're ready to take. So as the drought conditions continue to impact our surface water supply at Chenee, we need to have a strategic and focused approach to future water resiliency for this region. It's extremely critical that we're having this conversation today. I think the timing is right and we're excited to move forward pending your approval of this item. We need to expand and diversify our water portfolio and this study will help identify the most viable options. So we have ventured into recycling and reuse already. We've been doing this since 2015. I just want to provide a reminder of what we've done with Spirit. So the map on the left, and there's a lot of stuff there. So if you see kind of through the middle, to the left is south, to the right is north. The top yellow pin is our main wastewater treatment plant at the south end of Wichita, 57th and Hydraulic in District Three. Since 2015, we have been providing recycled reuse water, if you will, from that facility to Spirit, nearly a million gallons a day. I recently heard Representative Spirit at the Rotary talking about the value this has brought to them as part of their overall sustainability and recycle efforts. They continue to use this. We have a contract with them that provides up to that million gallons a day. Spirit did fund the infrastructure for this. And, and the reason why I mention it is that is because we've looked at other places previously for doing this, golf courses. We've got multiple wastewater facilities around the community, northwest, far east, and then south are kind of our main three facilities that we could look at reuse from. But this, what this study will do, will take a, a look at additional opportunities. And this approach to recycling treated wastewater for industrial and commercial reuse is one that merits further analysis and consideration, which we plan to do. There are other industries out there that could utilize this type of recycle. And I might mention real quick, I use the term reuse and recycle, and I'm using them interchangeably. Within the industry, it really comes down to what is, could be used for potable use for drinking water. For our purposes right now, I'm going to talk, use recycle and reuse, and I should have mentioned that sooner, basically the same way, right? So we, we want to take the resources that we have and reuse them to the best of our ability. So our ultimate goal beyond looking at additional industrial reuse, which is a big part of this study, and we think there's value in that for future conservation. Our ultimate goal for recycling and reuse is to look at what we call direct potable reuse. This is the treatment of wastewater to provide an innovative opportunity to create an additional safe and clean drinking water supply for the future. I'll show you a couple of things here on the next slides that'll kind of help illustrate what it is that we're looking at. There are the other states who have developed regulations. There are not currently state regulations in Kansas that allow direct potable reuse. We've been following closely what other states are doing and, and will watch and see, utilize the information, the things that they've done to be able to move forward with this effort here. Direct potable reuse could allow the city to furnish additional water during periods of prolonged severe drought and meet water demand growth well into the future. So what does this look like? If you can make out the picture on the left, you've probably seen this diagram before. We use this a lot to talk to folks in the community about how our water cycle works. And really what we're looking at here is closing the loop on the circle for our water cycle. At the top of this picture on the left is Chenee Reservoir and Equisbeds. It shows our two main water supplies. That water is pumped into our water treatment plant. It's distributed out to a system and a network of residential businesses, commercial businesses, industrial uses, a part in the middle. Whatever goes out from those places and those facilities goes to our wastewater treatment facilities. I mentioned we've got numerous facilities around the community. That gets treated to certain standards, to public health standards, not to drinking water standards, but per regulation it gets treated and it's disposed of in our rivers and streams. So if you see at the bottom of that picture in the middle, you can see that discharged to the river. Picture on the right is that same thing of what actually happens at our main wastewater treatment plant, again, what we call Plant Two at the south end of Wichita, 25 million gallons a day that goes into the Ark River, goes downstream for somebody else to use. We believe, and we're going to confirm this soon, because we've had this discussion in the past, that we have the rights to that water. And so the notion of us capturing that water, treating it, using advanced treatment, which I'm going to talk about in just a moment, treating it to drinking water standards, we can create our own water supply. We can close this loop on our water cycle for many years to come. So something I want to note before I get off this page, and I mentioned it and I'll say it again, someone else is going to utilize this water downstream eventually. I've heard KDHT staff talk about everyone's downstream of someone else, right? So some of the water that we capture in our bank wells, we call them for the Ark River, and even what we're doing with ASR is water that came from a facility like, most likely like this upstream from us. As we started into this with looking to hire a consultant, CDM has a tremendous public engagement consultant that's been involved with reuse for many, many years. Sarah's going to talk about them in just a moment, but I heard her say. But I heard her say, and it's really resonated with me, that if you live in New Orleans and drink the water there, you're drinking water that's been treated 11 different times by the time it gets there. So I think that's important to keep in mind of the value of this resource and what it is that we're doing. So there's a long road ahead of us, but I think we're off to a good start with where we want to go with this. So keep in mind that water is being discharged to the river. This looks highly technical because it kind of is. I'm not going to get into the details of this because I couldn't if I wanted to. On the left, where you see that says treated wastewater captured, what this cycle shows is how we would treat wastewater through the recycling process, what we call this direct potable reuse. That same discharge that you saw to the river would be captured. That's what we'll figure out the best, most economical way to do that. And it goes through a multi-barrier treatment approach. Advanced treatment, purification. What comes out of that process will most likely be cleaner water that we provide from our water treatment plants right now. Because of what's in place, what we've seen other states do with regulations, the regulations are very stringent, and they require that level of treatment to make sure that public health is held paramount first and foremost. This direct potable reuse creates an additional water supply for the future, and we really think that we can lead the way for Kansas because again, right now, there are no regulations for the state of Kansas. There's a project that's currently broke ground in El Paso, is one of the most recent ones for direct potable reuse. The there, I've read about the project numerous times. I know they're excited to be moving forward with that. There's regulations in Colorado and California also, and there's numerous projects moving forward in certain parts of the country to do this same thing. So the approach itself for this reuse study, the project will include engineering and other professional services to identify and explore opportunities for water recycling and reuse. The staff screening and selection committee interviewed five proposing firms and recommended CDM Smith on the basis of project approach, schedule, staff assignment, previous similar projects, and expertise. Council members Tuttle and Hoheisel, thank you for sitting on our selection committee. We had some very good firms that proposed on this project, a lot of knowledge and a lot of expertise, and we're happy to be moving forward with this recommendation today. Work will include establishing baseline water quality conditions, treatment requirements and technologies is what, a little bit of what I just looked at with you, and developing formal regulations again for direct potable reuse for the state of Kansas. We've started this conversation with KDHE already. I started talking to them actually last year. They're on board to have this conversation pending your approval today. We already have several meetings set up in Topeka next week with staff, myself, staff, our consultants, and several state agencies to really start digging into what this looks like and where this can go. Other elements will include identifying funding opportunities, addressing requirements for qualifying applications for that funding, and developing a strategy for implementing non-potable industrial reuse and direct potable reuse, just like I talked about. So we're going to be looking for funding opportunities on the state and federal levels. When the Bureau of Reclamation was here last fall to talk about the funding award for some of our ASR improvements, we started talking to them about this concept. They were excited to hear that we were moving in this direction. They indicated then that they have funding available for both planning and implementation of projects like this. So we're going to definitely be working on that as soon as we can. Public engagement and outreach is absolutely critical. It's probably one of the most critical parts of this process and this type of project. It is what has made this work in other states again. So we've watched, we were looking. CDM Smith has a lot of experience and has worked in other states that they're going to bring to the table. Sarah will talk about them in a moment, but there's, this is where we're going to take off and hit the ground running soon with public engagement. Outreach messaging and strategies will include the creation of a project steering committee that will provide a broad spectrum of support and a wide variety of opinions for water recycling and reuse applications. It's important that we hear from as many people in our community as we can as we move forward with this effort. In addition to, I mentioned KDHE and the Department of Agriculture, outreach will extend to public health organizations, healthcare providers, the restaurant and hospitality industry, wholesale water customers, and more. We continue to take all the opportunities that we can. I think I've got in the next 45 days, another 20 engagements to talk to a variety of folks about this effort to make sure everybody understands where we're headed, what we're looking at, try to make sure that we're providing the most information we can. But really, once we get moving forward, CDM Smith is going to provide the most value. We've talked to all of our wholesale customers about this. In fact, I've got a meeting with all of them in two weeks to make sure that they understand what we're looking at as far as this reuse effort, in particular with direct potable reuse. One last thing I want to mention, and I'm going to introduce Sarah and let her talk about CDM. I'm fortunate to have a seat on the Kansas Water Authority and was recently appointed to the new state program water task force. And so the reason why I say that is because I've had the opportunity on the Water Authority in the last year as we, they looked at a statewide water plan funding to talk about our efforts in Wichita. My position on either one of those is not to make sure things happen in Wichita, but to provide a perspective of what we're doing in the state's largest city and to hopefully look at something like direct potable reuse being applicable across the entire state. So I'm excited to move forward with those conversations. Having gotten to that point, I want to introduce Sarah Stewart. Sarah's the Senior Vice President, Project Manager for CDM Smith, and I'm going to have her talk to you about CDM, what they bring to this, their experience, and all the great things they've done with reuse.
Good morning. Yeah, you hear me okay? I'm a little shorter than he is. So CDM Smith, just a little bit about our firm. We're a little over 6,700 employees worldwide. We've been in business for 77 years. Recently, and I'll say, my personal experience with Wichita stands a little later than that. I started working with the city on the ASR program 15 years ago. More recently, I've had the honor of working with the city as the project manager on the Plant Two BNR improvements, Biological Nutrient Removal Program that we're in construction with. CDM Smith's also performing the SCADA programming, and we are well on way working on the biogas utilization and organic waste receiving program, which actually will be getting SOIs out this summer. So moving things forward. The team that we've brought today, we said our best and brightest. So Jesse Veach here with me, myself as project manager. I'll add, I am a resident of the state of Kansas, so a little bit north of here though. Our team's highlighted by our National Practice Leader, Greta Zornz and Anthony Zamaro. They've led these reuse studies and design piloting nationwide. Karthik Misari, he's out of Arizona. Karthik is new to our firm because for the, his previous job was with the state of Arizona, writing the DPR regulations on how to implement these type of projects for the state. So he'll be guiding us and helping us work with the state of Kansas in developing and implementing and making sure that what we do here protects the public and meets the state's goals moving forward. Stacy Barda is our Funding Discipline Lead. As you all know, to do anything, it has to start with how can we afford it? So we'll be starting that process this summer and identifying how can we leverage both local and national funds to help the affordability of this. And finally, and possibly most importantly, is the other Sarah on our team. Katz and Associates is a public outreach firm specializing in communicating about water reuse and water, water projects across the nation. So Sarah will be working with the community, with Megan and city staff on developing a community outreach program tailored to our community and really meeting the goals for the city of Wichita. A little bit of the highlights, we literally wrote the book on some of this stuff, folks. I know that sounds a little silly, but we did. The EPA Guidelines for Water Reuse, we authored the initial report in 1980, updated it again four more times. Katz and Associates wrote the WRF book on community outreach related to reuse studies. We've done a variety of pilots, DPR demonstration facilities across the US. You can see here, oh, okay, map shows up good up there. The, this is focused more on the reuse side of things, on the potable side. So when we talk about potable, that means drinking water. There's also the term non-potable, which is things like golf course irrigation. We are looking at both. We want to, water is a resource that we need to optimize as much as possible. You all know that with all the communications under. So the one thing I want to add to all of this and just wrapping up is this reuse study isn't just one study. So there is the citywide water reuse study. Our goal is by really December, January, that we're in a good form, draft form, to come back to the council and talk about recommendations and steps forward from that. It'll include, as I said, the non-potable side, so things like irrigation, spirit reuse, that's the non-potable things. Also the potable reuse piece, so the piece that Gary was speaking about of taking the effluent from Plant Two and treating it 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 again and using that back in the community. But beyond that, the first step towards developing that DPR is really developing a pilot work plan. To do something like this takes a lot of study, analysis, piloting, demonstration, proving out that this is safe for the public. So that study will be done over the summer, and the reason being is that we're targeting, submitting it to the Bureau of Rec for funding as a feasibility study in September. That deadline is from last year. They haven't published this year's deadline. We're assuming it's the same. So that is a big early out deliverable for us is again, trying to leverage that federal funding. We will be doing a full funding strategy plan, so there's more to that than just this first out, first early out item, the community outreach. We were just speaking that the sooner the better on that to really bolster and work with Gary and the community on speaking to your citizens about this. And finally, the regulatory outreach piece, we're going to be there on May 19th in Topeka to start getting into the details of how to move this forward for the city and for the state. Gary?
Thank you, Sarah. It's painfully obvious I should have introduced this item and stepped out of the way, so I appreciate your input. Last thing I've got for you on the financial considerations side is the total cost of the proposed contract is just under $1.2 million. The adopted CIP includes a project that's titled Faced Water Supply Plan that we knew this was coming and to be utilized for this purpose. So we're asking to initiate $1.2 million from 2025 today. I just want to reiterate that this study will estimate future face costs and identify funding sources. We don't know yet what any parts of this are going to cost because it's really going to depend on where we end up. Our focus is really on this side, the direct potable reuse side. We know it's going to be expensive. It's going to take some time, but the value that this could bring to our community for long-term water resiliency is something that we really need to have a better understanding, know what that costs look like, and then we're going to do everything we can to hopefully leverage outside funding for the same. With that, staff recommends city council approve the recommended study, budget, and contract, adopt the resolutions in the notices of intent, authorize the necessary signatures, and we'd be happy to stand for any questions.
Thank you, Gary and Sarah. We begin with Councilmember Tuttle.
Thank you. Thank you, Gary, for the presentation. I do have one question, and then I have several comments. You knew I would. I was fortunate enough to attend the Kansas Municipal Utilities Conference with Dawn Henry. Thank you for letting me tag along. And we talked, it was a specific session on direct potable reuse, and it was fascinating. And I kind of learned the answer, but I think as we go into this more, other people may start asking this question, so just want to bring it to the forefront before I bring in lots of kudos. You mentioned downstream, right? And everybody's water came from someone else's water. If we do direct potable reuse, what are the implications for the people downstream from us who may, now there's not going to be water? I just want to highlight it if we can.
So one of our, and thank you, that's a good question. One of our first efforts, I talked about meeting with Kansas Department of Health Environment and the Department of Agriculture next Monday in Topeka. That's one of the first things that we're going to tackle with Department of Agriculture and the Division of Water Resources, who has authority over water rights. Over the course of time, we've had discussions with them about who has the water rights to what you see here, this effluent that's going to the river. We have every reason to believe that we do. We're going to confirm that first and foremost before we go any farther here because you ask a great question. There are situations, not even just in our state, but other areas, there's compacts between states when it comes to water that requires certain releases of water from communities to keep going downstream. Typically, it's not in a situation like this because we have created this output from our water supplies, our water rights within Cheney and the equis beds, kind of sort of as a way to sum it up. But we're going to confirm that first and foremost because this takes a whole different look if for some reason that's not what we thought it was, but I feel confident about where we're at with that.
Okay, now for some comments. I first of all, want to say congratulations for getting on the state water reuse task force. I know several of us wrote letters and tried to get other people to send letters, and there wasn't a better candidate to represent our city than you. So super glad, and I know it's going to add to your already busy job jar, but thank you for doing that. Also, thank you for all the presentations you're doing out in the community. I've had the pleasure of attending many of them with you and several more in the future, and it's kind of been a roadshow, but it's interesting to hear people's interest in this, to listen to their questions. It's going to be vital as we move forward to know what our messaging will be. I also was a proud member along with Councilmember Hoheisel, as mentioned, as the selection committee. So thank you to CDM for being willing to do this adventure with us. I think it's going to be fantastic for the future of water. I also, along with Councilmember Hoheisel, sit on the local task force for water reuse and am excited to see how we can move forward. I talk about drought every day, and now I'm talking about water reuse, recycle water every day in this city, multiple times a day. And I think all of us doing that is how the message is going to get out and people to understand how critical this is. Gary knows this. I've challenged us as a city of Wichita, and I've told South Central delegation folks in Topeka that I want us to be the first city in the state of Kansas to get direct potable reuse, and I think we can do it, and I think this is a great first step. Just one other comment, this is not just critical for households. You know, we turn on our faucet in the morning, we hope there's water, we brush our teeth, we go about our day, and we don't think twice about it. But as business and industries are thinking of potentially locating to Wichita, Kansas, they're going to look at our utilities and they're going to look at our infrastructure. And if they see that we're in drought and we're not aggressively addressing this for the future, not only could this, you know, potentially harm us as humans, having our most basic right, but it could harm our basic economic development opportunities. So this is critical for the growth and continuation of the city of Wichita. So just many, many kudos to you, Gary, to you, Dawn, and to all your team, and I'm looking forward to seeing what's going to happen in the next few years. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember, and I might provide a quick comment on that last part because I'm glad that you mentioned that, and I wanted to mention that too. And the discussions I have with community, needless to say, people want to be able to water their grass more than once a week, but I try to remind them where we're headed, and if that's the worst thing we have to deal with right now, we're in a pretty good place. But looking to the future, it is important for the growth of our community and not just to be able to water our yards. I'm actually making a presentation next week to the Greater Wichita Partnership and Downtown Wichita Board, so they have a better understanding of where we're headed and so that they can help carry this same message when looking at businesses that are wanting to come to Wichita.
To that, we've recruited for the local task force, the Chamber, and then also potentially, and I know it was in your slide, but the restaurant and hospitality industry. So I really just think we're doing a great job of diversifying our local task force so that we can get as many allies and people interested in this topic. Many, many voices will be needed as we move forward.
Thank you.
Councilmember Hoheisel.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Gary. It's been a pleasure to serve on this. I think this is very instrumental towards setting our city up for the future. Just, I think I already know this answer, but just for the public's information, you said 25 million dollars or 25 million gallons come out a day from the treatment plant. What is our water use average per day for the city?
Thank you for that question. I actually had that as a note, and I skipped over that because I usually mention that during these presentations. So in non-drought conditions, when we're not under restrictions, our average demand is 50 million gallons a day over the course of a year. And so if you can imagine, you know, we don't necessarily get one for one here, but if we can capture theoretically- we can capture theoretically 25 million gallons a day and create a new water supply, what that does for us long-term to be able to provide half of our demand, I think it's quite possible that we wouldn't have to talk about the impacts of drought in the future, you know?
Half, half, it could be half. Yes, sir. All right. Thank you, Gary.
Councilmember Johnson.
Thanks, Mayor. Gary, I was hoping you would discuss all the steps on filtration and all the different types.
I didn't want to bore you with that.
I just wanted to say, I appreciate the work on this and I'm definitely supportive. I know it was a brief conversation when we were working on building a new water treatment plant to have this opportunity, but we need to really be looking at always thinking about being in drought and reusing water, supplying half of what we use from reuse, I think is a good thing and looking forward to seeing what this study will bring about.
Councilmember Ballard.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Gary, for all of your work on the water treatment plant in itself and trying to get creative with how to recycle and reuse water. For the record, I am extremely supportive of this, but there was some chatter about it last night at the dab, at my dab. Of course, there was concern about $1.2 million. You know, we talked a little bit about that and the importance basically of needing some experts to help guide us in the right direction, but just to flip the other side of the coin, what happens if we wouldn't do this? And I am supportive, but just for conversational, I mean, I think the answer is fairly obvious, but I would just lean into you to see if you had anything else to add.
So if this, if we are not to do, if we don't move forward with this, and I'll just caution again, I just said it before and I'll say it again, we don't know ultimately what the cost is going to look like and how this might get funded. So that's going to be a challenge in and of itself. Being able to figure out the needed technology, that's probably the easy part because of the experts that we've got. Looking forward to the community engagement. I think we can really put a good plan together, but for whatever reason this doesn't happen, we're going to continue to dig in with the things that we're doing now. I mentioned that we're going to get to a point where we're going to be a little bit limited on future return on investment for the work that we're doing in the Equisbeds, Aquifer. We are actually working with the state of Kansas and GMD2 on the opportunity to do some advanced treatment of further up in the Equisbeds where there's some chloride contamination and where the city could provide treatment for that, which we could. And that could create an additional potential water source for us. It's not a lot, but I'll tell you what we're still doing in the meantime, and I should have mentioned earlier. I'll give you an example. We've been in close contact with Evergy. Evergy has a shuttered power plant northwest of Wichita that they have fairly significant water rights and they haven't decided what they're going to do with those water rights in the future. We've been in conversation with Evergy, we've been in conversation with the state of Kansas and GMD2, what that opportunity looks like in the future for utilization of those water rights. I think there's a possibility, depending on where they go with that, that those water rights could be available, maybe even on a kind of a shared basis with other people in GMD2. So we're looking at options like that. We've had conversations with others, anytime that other water rights might be available. We're not going to stop looking for options. I mentioned before the way that water rights are appropriated across the state. I get calls from a lot of people saying, hey, I see a lot of these ponds, they've got water in them, why don't you go in after those? Couple parts of that is we don't necessarily have the rights to that water and more times than not, it's just not as much water as it seems that it is. I think we've, once our new water treatment plant is up and operating and putting water in the system, you've heard me talk before too about the flexibility that that brings, that we can treat more groundwater than we can now, so that adds to our long-term resiliency and sustainability also. So we'll keep the same effort going forward in parallel, even with this study, keep our eyes and ears open and make sure that we're not missing any opportunities along the way.
Just the last comment that I would make is it was asked if we would be exploring these opportunities if we were not in the middle of a drought. So I mean...
That's a great question, and I don't know if I can tell you the honest truth if I would know that. It makes sense, the longer that this drought has gone on, because I will be the first to tell you, when we went into stage one of our drought response plan in January of 2023, I would have never bet that we'd still be in this situation that we're in now. We are in the middle of historic drought, something that we haven't seen in a long, long time. Even if that is the reason, I'm okay with that. I think it makes sense and we need to be responsible. We need to be looking ahead. I think it's, I've always said, my belief is back in 2013, that drought was taken care of by two massive rain events 10 days apart, and I would bet you two weeks later that most of our community forgot that we were even in a drought, including me. And so the reason why I say that is this is fresh on everybody's mind. It makes sense that we need to do everything we can to try to avoid this in the future because right now there is no end in sight to where we're at with this current drought.
Well, I appreciate all of your work on it. I think one of the positives out of COVID is it forced us to modernize a lot of different things that we were doing just around the community. And if this is what we, one of the things that we get out of the drought is to modernize and find new ways to recycle and reuse, then I'm all for it. So thank you.
I agree. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Johnston.
Thank you, Mayor. I guess they say the SESTI is the engine of innovation, so maybe that's the reason. So I do want to compliment you and your whole team, not only for the water team, but the roads team. You really look for ways to be inventive and creative and look at new things and try new things, and I do really appreciate that. I do have a question about the picture on the screen though. It seems that maybe is our old water treatment plant? When will we change that picture to our new?
Oh, sorry. I don't have an answer for you on that just yet, but that's a good point. We'll get that updated as soon as we can.
It was April 1st and it must be having trouble getting up there.
I don't have any information for you at this point. We're working through a couple of things and we'll have an update soon.
Councilmember Glasscock.
Thank you, Gary. I know that you can't answer this question I'm about to ask, but I know that this question I'm going to be asked from the public is if we move forward with potable reuse, will they see an increase in their water cost, a decrease? What's an answer I could give them now just by exploring this option?
I can tell you that no one will probably see a decrease, but I don't know the answer to that yet. That's a part of what we're going to be evaluating and we'll have a better idea in the coming 12 months and even by the end of this year. Our goal, I said this and I just want to say it again, first and foremost, is to leverage as much outside funding as we can. I've started this conversation with Jim Davenport, our federal lobbyist, and I have a call with him soon, is I want him to understand where we're going with this. I've talked to, Councilmember Tuttle talked about visiting the South Central Kansas delegation. We're going to make sure all of our legislators are aware of our efforts and where we're going, so that's our first priority. What we've seen from other communities that are going through this now, they have been able to receive funding. I think that's really going to dictate how much we can do and when and where, and that's a decision we would bring back to the council, probably multiple times to talk about options. And it very well could be looking at a future rate impact, just as we did with the water treatment plant and the B and R improvements, and we'll have to really evaluate what that return on investment is. Right now, I don't know. Very well could be a part of the rates discussion. I expect that it would be at some point in time. This project's going to probably take a while. If we really get to the point of direct potable reuse, from what we've seen that other states have done, we're probably talking about a five-year period likely to get to that point. I think some of the things for industrial reuse, the non-potable reuse could happen sooner if we can work out logistics and funding with how those happen. So I know I didn't clearly answer that for you is because we don't know just yet.
Well, I think it's our duty to protect the planet. I think it's our duty to look at these options regardless of whether or not we are in a drought or not. I think reuse of water should be a priority of our community and the rest of the state, so thanks for leaving on it.
A question regarding the phased water supply plan. Have we thought about looking at state dollars instead of these dollars from our CIP?
We have. So to be able to kick this off and get this moving, we wanted to be able, we've got this funding in place now, so one of the first things we'll do, Sarah talked about it, they've got some expertise on their team that focuses on funding. One of the things I want to do early on and have tasked CDM Smith with doing that is to try to find state or federal dollars even for this study. I mentioned when we spoke to Bureau of Reclamation last fall about this effort, they were the ones that volunteered even at that time to say, hey, we've got funding for your planning efforts. So we're going to be in touch with, we're going to be in touch with them very soon to hopefully we can find a way to replace even these funding, this funding that we're using now.
That would be great. I do believe that we provide 20% of water in the state of Kansas?
Seventeen, well, we provide water to 17% of all Kansas.
So I would see this as a really significant state issue as well. So I know that Sarah mentioned that, I believe, who was it? On slide number 117, you have a specific individual who helps with funding, Stacy right there. I wanted to know, are we late in the game when it comes to these funds? Because I think there was another slide that showed areas in the United States that have had these types of programs. So are we late?
You're not late. A lot of the areas you're looking at, I mean, California started working on reuse projects in the 90s, right? So they've got 30 years of growth on us. The first, I guess, the first true DPR plant is in construction in Texas right now for the state of Texas. So all those dots kind of follow the coast mainly because lack of water, high population, right? So we're, we're actually, I would say, out in front in terms of looking at this. I would also mention that it's not even just state dollars. A lot of your, your industry, a lot of data centers, things like that, there are often funding opportunities like Spirit where they need it for their own internal goals that they might be able to help cash flow or balance on some of those non-potable options. That's all part of this comprehensive study. I know we're kind of focusing on DPR, but we really are looking at everything as, over the course of the next eight months. So not late yet. The other thing we have to know is how much it costs and we don't know that yet. That's part of what we have to get to is what does the technologies look like? What could the cost be? And construction costs right now are scary, right? All the tariffs and everything. So we've got to really pin that down in order to start talking about return on investment.
And we would be the first in the state to do this type of study and anything related to direct potable reuse, is that correct?
The city of Derby's turned in, not Derby, Dodge City has a Bureau of Rec funding approved for, it's not DPR though, but it is a reuse project. So there is one ahead of you, but they're not looking at it the way you are.
And then lastly, when I was at National League of Cities, we were in Tampa and they talked about their new water treatment plant and just obviously reuse as well, but they talked about PFAS. So I'm curious if this will also be part of the conversation because there will be multiple treatments if we get to direct potable reuse. Are there even better methods to get even better quality water with no PFAS?
That's an incredibly timely question. PFAS is a concern throughout the industry, both on the potable and wastewater side. Now, the nice thing about the traditional DPR process is it includes granular activated carbon, GAC. It looks like black heavy sand. That removes PFAS. So the typical traditional DPR process is already set up to remove it. So if you have it in your system, it's coming out before it would, before the community would see it. So that one we got covered.
Thank you very much.
No problem.
I see no further questions. I do have one more, Gary, just a quick comment. You mentioned stage one of this drought actually occurred starting January 2023 and stage two was activated August of 2024. Even if we had normal rains, back to normal rains, when would we be able to get back to normal? Because I do believe a lot of individuals in our community believe if we just get one major rainfall over Chenee, it will solve it.
Well, I might answer that by talking about stage three first, if you don't mind. I know you didn't ask that, but I want to mention it real quick. Right now, we're projecting that we will stay out of stage three until early next year, but I will tell you, and the reason why I mention this because you talked about rainfall, that still contemplates average rainfall. If we don't get average rainfall this year, stage three could show up yet this fall. So I want to make that clear, but to your point, the way this plan is set up, as you all are aware, each stage is triggered by the 12-month running average of the conservation pool, the level, if you will, the amount of water in Chenee reservoir. Makes sense, you deal with seasonal variations, we don't want to hop in and out. The way it was set up, it initially contemplates that you come out of it the same way. And so, but we have some flexibility within that to kind of see how it happens, when it happens, so it wouldn't have to take that long. Could take some time because if you do get a big rain that fills up a good portion of the reservoir, we've got to be really careful because this time of year is the temperatures start to crank up, evaporation is considerable. I don't remember the number, but if you all recall last July, as we were contemplating stage two, during the month of July, there was a considerable drop, probably a foot or more just in one month for Chenee from evaporation only. So there's a lot of variables we'd have to weigh, but I would tell you that if we get, then there'd have to be some major rain events because Chenee reservoir was not as low in 2013 as it is now, but even if it came back up, we'd have to have some real careful consideration of what that means. Needless to say, we don't want to pull the drought restrictions, go on a two-month hot, dry streak, lose a bunch of water and then hop right back into it.
Thank you, Gary. I see no further questions from the council. We'll open it up for public comment. I see no public comment. We'll bring it back to the bench. Given that, again, Gary and the staff at CDM Smith will be looking at other possible state funding to help with even this very study, I am comfortable with moving this item. So I move to approve the project, budget, contract, adopt the resolution and authorize the necessary signatures.
Second.
Motion and a second, any further discussion? I see none. Mr. Clerk, please open the roll. Motion passes seven zero. Mr. Clerk, please call the next item.
Wichita Central County Metropolitan Area Planning Department, City of Wichita, application
Good afternoon. Scott Wade from the Planning Department. So for this one, a little bit of background information. The Planning Department was created, as you know, through a partnership between the city and the county, and per the inter-local agreement, the Planning Department is funded 50-50 by the city and county with contributions being offset by application fees. So that's how the Planning Department is funded. Here's a graph that shows percentages, as you can see, the overall, the largest percentages from the city and the county support. According to Planning Department records, the last fee increase occurred in 2018. A review of records indicate that the fee increases occurred approximately every two years prior to that. So in terms of analysis, between 2018 and 2023, inflation increased by nearly 20%. And so what we did is we looked at Planning Department cost, we looked at the cost for processing applications. This includes mostly current plans division and part of our administration division. It does not include the advanced plans division or our zoning enforcement division. And what we found is that approximately 72% to 76% of the planning services budget is spent on processing costs. In terms of our cost recovery, the MAPD budgeted recovery rate ranged generally from 21% to 23%. The MAPD cost recovery has been nearly flat from 2019 to 2023. It appears that the cost recovery has gone up during this time period, even though the department costs have gone up and the application fees... and the application fees have not increased. And I believe that's largely because case activity increased over that period. Here's a graph showing the amount of cases and where it picked up. It appears that much of the growth was in case types where fees are collected. So the recommended action is to increase the MAPD city application fees by 10%. This would result in a cost recovery rate of 27%. The taxpayer general funds from the city and the county, both combined, would subsidize 73% of the case processing cost. Without the fee increase, the case processing cost recovery rate is 25%. And it is important to note that the city planning applications and process to review them, including collecting community input, are considered to have a greater overall community benefit than individual benefit and are usually subsidized to some degree by local governments. Here's a sample of the fees for a variety of different case types, and a number of zoning cases and one plating style. There are a number of different fees, so this is just a small example. So the fees would generally increase by 10%, and they're rounded up to the nearest $5 increment just for ease of processing. So here's the example of what would happen with the zoning fee application. So you can see MF 18 all the way up to neighborhood retail. It's currently $900. It would increase to $990. And then there's a per acre fee that's charged as well. So in that instance, it would go from $30 to $35. Here's the subdivision or plating fee example, and in this case, it'd be for one-step plat. So it goes from $900 to $990, and the per acre fee would remain at $20 because of how we round it. So in terms of the process, so this is just an overview of the process, because there are two entities that we've been corresponding with, both the city and the county. We've also taken this out to WABA and did a presentation at a WABA developers' meeting. And so we're here today for the city council consideration. Now, additional note about this is that at a city council workshop, members of the city council indicated that they would like to see stakeholder engagement in the future and potentially establish a goal level of cost recovery, which would be used to help determine when fee changes are needed. I want to acknowledge that expressed preference and indicate that we plan to work towards accomplishing that. So the recommended action is for the city council to authorize the MAPD fee increase and adopt the resolution. Again, that is for a 10% fee increase. And a note on this is that the effective date would be July 1st. That would allow time to notify people about this, and also for the county to consider similar fee increases. And also a note on that, because the county fees require county commission action, this would provide time for them to consider it. And so with that, I'll stand for any questions.
Thank you, Scott. Councilmember Hoheisel.
Thank you, Mayor. Thanks, Scott. Just a quick question. So if county does not up their fees, does that mean that any applications in the county will stay the same, but then the ones here in the city will go up?
Correct. Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Tuttle.
Thank you, Councilmember Hoheisel stole my notes. I was going to ask the same question. Then just the other question you mentioned about getting the information out so people know is, do we have, are we working with communications, or are you going to take care of that internally? How will we let people know about this change after the BOCC vote, obviously?
Sure, sure. Well, the first thing we do is we hang up posters in our office, just because we know that there are routine clients that come through. The other way that we would do that is updating our website to make sure that it's one of the first things that you see. So if you're seeking information on a zoning case, you can find that, as well as we have an email distribution list to all the consultant firms and other members who have, of the public who have signed up for that. So we'll use that as well. We'll also work with communications if there's any other avenues they suggest.
This may be, I'm famous for offering my unsolicited advice, so I'm sorry, but I wonder if even placing something like on the, just a routine disclaimer on the agenda for MIPC, because so many people who are in this world read that agenda, even if they don't have an item on it. So just FYI.
Sure.
Thank you. Thank you for all you do, Scott. Appreciate you.
Scott, I have several questions. Back in November of 2024, was the recommended increase 10% also, or was it a different percent?
For the city, it has remained at the 10%. At one time, the county was discussing a 5%.
And I see on the green sheet, this cost recovery in itself was due to request for information. Are you talking about the council itself?
I'm sorry, I'm, which?
It says in 2024, in response to requests for information.
Yes. So as part of this discussion, there have been a variety of questions that have really helped us to learn more about the situation. One of those questions was, what's the cost recovery look like in terms of what expenditures we have? We did not have that information before. The second question that came up then was, how do we compare to other communities? So we did that research as well in terms of fees. And then a third question that came up was, how do we measure efficiency in the Planning Department, and how does the Planning Department compare with other departments?
And I appreciate that because I have been one of the ones who has been advocating for making sure that we have cost recovery, or at least understand what cost recovery looks like, so that people understand the subsidy that taxpayers are providing while there is a public good being served. So again, I appreciate this information. So I did take a look at the report in regards to the other departments you benchmarked against. So I wanted to know, in terms of fees, so you gave an example of a $900 fee that with a 10% increase would be about $990. Is this comparable to other cities our size, north and south of us?
So what we found is that when it comes to the cities, actually, I've got some slides here, just in case. So what we found is that there was one of the cities that we surveyed, seven cities had lower fees, one city had similar fees, and two cities had higher fees. So the two cities that had higher fees were in Oklahoma. The one city that had similar fees was in Nebraska. And then the seven cities were a variety of communities, both in Kansas and some in neighboring states.
I saw that the cost recovery on our green sheet talked about subsidy to 73%, whereas your slide said that the subsidy would be 72%. Have we, I'm just curious, why is, have we thought about either a third, a model that looks like a third versus two-thirds? Because right now, this is a heavy subsidy, and I appreciate that, again, it's because of the common good. We do want to encourage development. So can you kind of explain why we're settling on this percentage?
At this point, it was because 10% is what folks seem to be comfortable with, or at least interested in during our conversations. I believe that the next stage of this, which is to have conversations with stakeholders, will help us to establish what that benchmark is that we want to aim for, whether it's 25%, 30%, whatever it may be. And so once that's established, then that will help guide when and if fee increases or potentially, not likely, but potentially a decrease, might also be warranted.
Mayor, I will mention that our early discussions did talk about getting to a one-third split, as you suggested, and it seemed to be a, maybe a little too significant an increase for the industry to accept when we first started talking about it, and that's why we came with the 10%. But my goal going into the discussions is to try to ramp up to get to that, that split, because that's, from a policy standpoint, I think that makes sense, and it would probably fit well with our cost recovery pyramid.
Thank you. I have no further questions, and I see that we don't have any from the council. We will now open it up for public comment. I see none. I'll bring it back to the bench. I will go ahead and move that the, that we adopt the ordinance and authorize the necessary signatures.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? I see none. Mr. Clerk, please open the roll.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero. Mr. Clerk, please call the next item.
Request to set a public hearing for a community improvement district for SoC corner.
Honorable Mayor, Members of Council, Troy Anderson, Assistant City Manager. So this is a request to establish a community improvement district. So a little bit of background, Socie Economic Development Group is the owner of a mixed-use building and a couple of mixed-use buildings located at the southwest corner of Lincoln and South Broadway. They would like to make some substantial investments in that corner, including things like retail office and some multifamily space. They have requested the use of Community Improvement District CID to assist in reimbursing them for those costs in investing in that corner. The CID petition is signed by one hundred percent of the landowners. The, the project scope, they're anticipating an estimated investment of about $2.6 million. Based on their pro forma and the sales tax revenue that they anticipate to collect over the next 22 years at the 2%, they believe that that it might generate about $450,000. So for the purposes of today's conversation, to establish a CID, the city council must first adopt a resolution, which states that the city council is considering the establishment, and then setting a date for a public hearing on the matter. There's also some requirements for advertising and posting notice for that public hearing. And so at this point in time, the public hearing is currently slated for June 10. As it relates to sort of financing the project, again, this is referred to as a pay-as-you-go. The developer will pay all construction costs associated with the project. The city will not be issuing any debt for the project. And so the proceeds will then be held by the city and dispersed pursuant to a development agreement, again, up until that cost cap, about $450,000. So either at such time when that cost cap is reached, or the 22-year term has been, has expired, whichever is earlier. The applicant's been in contact with the council district representative and are working on the 10% allocation to community benefit. So Law Department has reviewed and approved the petition and resolution as deformed. That being said, it's staff recommendation that city council accept the petition, adopt the resolution, setting a public hearing for June 10, and consider the establishment of a community improvement district, and authorize the necessary signatures. With that, I'll stand for questions.
Thank you, Troy. I do have one question. So the green sheet said a public hearing may be held for this project, the earliest would be January 7, 2025. Did you mean to say January 10, 2025?
It, it was a typo. It's June 10. So as you'll see in the recommendation later on, it, it is clarified, June 10, 2025.
So it's a typo?
Yes.
Thank you very much. And I believe Councilmember Hoheisel mentioned this at the agenda review, but this would specifically help with the firefighter memorial?
Yes, that's the plans that have been identified by the SoC group, is to put the 10% for public use into the firefighter memorial. So that'd be a, a nice little chunk of change helping out there.
I see no questions. So we'll open it up for public comment. I see no public comment. We'll bring it back to the bench. This is in Councilmember Hoheisel's district.
Thank you, Mayor. We got a lot of good things going on and setting the stage for South Broadway to have a renaissance, and this is one of those many pieces here. So I'd like to move that the city council accept the petition and adopt the resolution, setting a public hearing on June 10, 2025, for consideration of the establishment of a community improvement district and authorize the necessary signatures.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? I see none. Mr. Clerk, please open the roll.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero. Mr. Clerk, please call the next item.
Con 2025-41, conditional use request in the city for an accessory apartment on property zoned SF5, single-family residential, generally located within one block west of Northwest Street and one half mile north of West 13th Street, 1632 North Nevada Court.
Mayor, if I may, I think you wanted to advance an item.
I did. Do you mind if, I will wait for this item and ask if we can vote to move an agenda item up? I would like to move the Wichita State University Campus of Applied Sciences and Technology use and lease agreement at McConnell, sorry, at Colonel James Jabara Airport up to this position in the agenda.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? I see none. Mr. Clerk, please open the roll.
Aye.
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 By voice vote, all members say aye in favor? Aye. All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes seven zero. We will now move up the WSU Tech agreement agenda item.
Mayor, just a quick reminder, you're operating as the airport authority on this item, not the council.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council. Jesse Romo, Director of Airports, Wichita Airport Authority. Here to talk the new deal at Jabar, but I want to give you a quick recap on what got us here in the first place. And so a couple years back, we were talking with WSU Tech. We said we'd get creative and partner with them to find funding solutions to get some infrastructure put in place, should they ever have an opportunity to expand in the future. The Kansas Department of Commerce had a grant program, a loft, that we ended up applying for, and we got the grant. So we went into a partnership agreement with WSU Tech, and we've been managing that infrastructure side of the project. And it helped set them up to develop additional facilities to expand their related workforce development training program. They continue to wish to develop to the south of the current NCAT campus. Any expansion of their campus requires the additional airfield pavement, and that's where we got the grant agreement. And just as a reminder of where the location is, along Webb Road there, you'll see the current NCAT campus, and then just to the south. I'm missing pictures. I'm missing lots of pictures. This is not the correct PowerPoint. So let me just talk on the fly, so to speak. Okay, so we have an agreement, actually. Good old paper, right? When technology fails you. I apologize for that, Council. But I want to make sure I get the details of this agreement accurate. Okay. WSU Tech does wish to develop the additional facilities to expand their aviation-related workforce development training programs, which will include professional pilot, emerging aviation, and advanced air mobility. An agreement has been negotiated with WSU Tech to lease 9.6 acres of land to allow the construction of an 80,000, excuse me, 85,000 square foot hangar and additional educational facilities. As a governmental entity, WSU Tech will have a facility ownership throughout the term of the agreement. It's subject to reversion to WAA at the expiration or upon a change in use. The agreement term spans 31 years. It aligns with the expiration of our current agreement with the county for the NCAT campus. Due to WSU Tech's status as a Kansas public non-for-profit educational institution, the agreement negotiated includes a rate that is 50% off the published land rental rate for Jabara Airport. This agreement results in a new annual revenue of $51,521 with 1% escalation every year. It is recommended that the Wichita Airport Authority approve the agreement and authorize the necessary signatures. My apologies again for not having the pretty pictures to show, the renderings that they have provided with us. It's a great-looking facility. If you ever drive along Webb Road, there is a lot of the ramp that has already been constructed. We're over 90% complete on that project. So this is perfect timing for us to continue to roll right into their development agreement. With that, I'll stand for questions.
Thank you, Jesse. Councilmember Tuttle.
Thank you. Thank you, Jesse, for being willing to be adaptive. Appreciate it. I don't have a question, but due to a conflict of interest, I will be abstaining from this vote today.
Thank you again, Jesse. I have no questions. I, I will wait. I don't see anyone on the council that has questions. So we'll now open it up for public comment.
Well, good afternoon, Mayor Wu. Council members and members of the staff.
Council members and members of the staff. I'm Sheri Utash, President of WSU Tech, and just want to take a moment to thank you for the opportunity to be here today on behalf of WSU Tech to express our strong support for the land lease agreement before you. This partnership reflects our shared commitment to innovation, to workforce development, and the continued growth of our community. We are especially grateful to Jesse Romo and the airport Wichita Airport Authority staff for their collaboration, not only through this project, but for the last 15 years and as we present this agreement today. Their responsiveness, their professionalism, and their shared vision have been instrumental as we plan for the next phase of the National Center for Aviation Training. I have been honored to be joined this morning by some of my board members who have, a couple of them have left, but Dr. Alicia Thompson, Doug Stark, and Greg Stroud, also WSU General Counsel Stacia Bowden, and members of the WSU Tech leadership team, each representing a critical part of the collaboration and support behind this effort and who believe, just as I do, with this shared vision of what we think we can continue to build in Wichita for workforce development. Together, we see this lease as an important next step towards the future. It is a future filled with opportunity for our students, for our business and industry, and for the Wichita region. So I want to thank you for your leadership, for your partnership, and for your consideration of this lease.
Thank you, Dr. Utash. I see no further comments. I'll bring it back to the bench. And before I make the motion, I will disclose that I'm a board member of the WSU Tech Board, but I have no financial gain as a board member or through WSU Tech. However, I am the mayor of the City of Wichita and a very proud one. As I go around the nation talking about the air capital of the world, I always talk about our educational institutions that help with maintaining the air capital of the world moniker. For me, air stands for something. It stands for aviation, innovation, and research. And this proposal right now touches all three of those. And as one of the co-chairs of the National League of Cities Advanced Air Mobility Task Force, this is again how we're going to maintain our air capital signature, and we want to maintain that because I can tell you that there are other communities that are competing for that spot. And so I am very grateful that we have partners in our community, in private industry, in education, and here in the public sector, even with Sedgwick County, in supporting this ecosystem that is truly special and unique because we have a really talented manufacturing skilled workforce, and it is thanks to these partnerships. So I am so excited to move this item, and without further ado, I move that the Wichita Airport Authority approve the agreement and authorize the necessary signatures.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? I see none. Mr. Clerk, please open the roll. Motion passes six zero with one abstention. We will take a break right now. So we will take a 15-minute break and return here at 12:50. How about that? 12:50, we'll return for the council meeting.
Con 2025, conditional use request in the city for an accessory apartment on property zone SF5, single-family residential, generally located within one block west of Northwest Street and one half mile north of West 13th Street, 1632 North Nevada Court.
Good afternoon, Scott Wadele from the Planning Department. So as you heard, the applicant is requesting a conditional use to allow for an accessory apartment. This case is being heard because the District Advisory Board and the Planning Commission, they both recommended approval, but they have slightly different conditions. Subject site, as you heard, is at 1632 North Nevada Court. So it's generally located south and west of the intersection of 17th and West Street. The site consists of one ownership parcel, it's developed with a single-family house, related outbuildings, and it's zoned SF5. The applicant has indicated they'd like to construct the accessory apartment on the property. The property is surrounded by other properties that are zoned SF5, and to the northeast and west, they're developed with single-family residences, and to the south is a school. The staff report contains information about supplementary use conditions that apply to accessory apartments. In terms of review, on April 10th, the Planning Commission held a public hearing for this item and recommended approval with conditions, which are identified in the staff report, and that vote was 13 to 0. One member of the public spoke on this item at that meeting and wanted additional information on the proposed apartment to determine whether or not he supported the request. On April 14th, the District Advisory Board reviewed the request and recommended approval, the same as the MAPC, but with an additional condition, and that additional condition is that the accessory apartment must have a gabled roof. No members of the public spoke on this item at that meeting. No protests were received against the case, therefore the conditional use can be approved by a simple majority vote, four of seven. In terms of recommended actions, recommend the City Council adopt the findings of the Planning Commission, approve the requested conditional use with MAPC conditions, authorize the necessary signatures, and instruct the clerk to publish a resolution after approval. And again, four out of seven votes. Alternatives include overriding the MAPC and adopting alternative findings, and denying the conditional use that requires five of seven votes, or returning it to the MAPC for additional consideration. Again, just requires a simple majority. And just note on process that public comment occurs, typically occurs at the Planning Commission. So here's the images and graphics, here's the zoning map, here's the map from the comprehensive plan showing residentials recommended there. Here's the site plan submitted by the applicant as part of the application, and it shows where the accessory building would be constructed. Here's the protest map and notification map showing that no protests were submitted. Here are photos of the site and the surrounding area. And with that, I'll stand for any questions.
Thank you, Scott. Any questions for staff? I see none. This resides in Councilmember Ballard's district.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to override the MAPC, approve the conditional use with the MAPC recommended condition, but with one additional change as recommended by the DAB, which I will read in just a moment. Place the resolution on first reading, authorize necessary signatures, and instruct the city clerk to publish the resolution after approval of the second reading. The change recommended by the DAB, it's that the accessory apartment must have a gabled roof. In support of this motion, I offer the following findings. The additional conditions will help reduce potential negative impacts to nearby properties by making the design more reflective of the residential buildings in the area.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? I see none. All those in favor say aye. Aye. All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes, 7-0. Mr. Clerk, please call the next item.
Zone 2024-51, zone change request in the city from L.I. Limited Industrial District to MF18 Multifamily Residential District to create a residential development, generally located on the east side of North Greenwich Road and within one quarter mile north of East 37th Street North.
Good afternoon. Scott Wadele again. So for this item, I just have some quick comments on it. The item was deferred from the February 11th City Council meeting. The applicant has withdrawn the application, so there's no need for any action by the City Council. The recommended action is just simply to acknowledge that the application has been withdrawn.
Thank you, Scott. This was in Councilmember Toddles' district.
So we're gonna post, we're gonna just poll it, is that correct?
Exactly, that's correct. There's no need for any formal action, it's just in case there was anyone who was paying attention to the case and saw that it got deferred and had interest in it, that this would just be a time to say it has been withdrawn by the applicant.
Because you and I chatted, and we don't actually have a formal vote.
Correct.
Correct. Okay, thank you. Just wanted to make sure nothing changed.
Thank you very much. Mr. Clerk, can you please call the next item?
Vacation 2025-9, request in the city to vacate a portion of a platted setback and a portion of a platted utility easement, generally located within one half mile south of East Douglas Avenue and one quarter mile west of South Oliver Avenue, 301 South Terrace Drive.
Scott Wadele again, from the Planning Department. So this one is a little bit different than some of the cases that you've seen before. This is a vacation case, and in this case, as you heard, the applicant is requesting to vacate the east two feet of a five-foot utility easement along the west side, so you can see those blue line along the west side. They're also requesting to vacate part of this curve, they want the southwesterly most five feet of that 35-foot building setback to be vacated. This item is being heard today simply because the MAPC is recommending approval of the setback vacation, so part of that curve one, and they are recommending denial of the utility easement vacation off to the west. And so that denial is what triggers it to be non-consent. In terms of the request, the applicant has indicated they're requesting the vacations in order to rebuild a detached garage that was in the same general footprint as that used to be on the site, in this, generally the same vicinity is where they're proposing this new one. The site is located at 301 South Terrace Drive in the College Hill neighborhood. It's made up of one parcel, just over a quarter of an acre in size, zoned SF5, and currently developed with a single-family house. The staff report provides information about input from various utility and service providers, and in terms of review, on April 10th, the Planning Commission voted 13 to 0 to deny the utility easement and to approve the setback vacation with the conditions that are listed in the staff report. I would just mention that the denial was recommended because there are utilities in that easement, and so utility providers came and said it would be a bad idea to vacate that. The applicant's agent indicated that they are agreeable with the MAPC recommendation. No public comments were received, and no valid objections have been filed with the city clerk. So in terms of council action, it's recommend the City Council follow the recommendation of the Metropolitan Area Planning Commission and approve the vacation order to reduce the platted setback, deny the requested vacation of the utility easement, and authorize the necessary signatures. That requires just a simple majority of four of seven votes. There are other alternatives. You can approve both vacation requests, and that would require, again, just a simple majority of four of seven votes, or you can deny all of them, which would require, again, just a simple majority of four of seven votes. So, or as always, you can return the case to the MAPC for additional consideration. Let me take you through some of the graphics and images. So here's the graphic showing the vacation areas. There we go. This is the illustration of those that was submitted by the applicant. Ah, that's all we have. So with that, I'll stand for any questions.
Questions for staff? I see none. This resides in Councilmember Johnson's district.
Thank you, Mayor. I move that the City Council follow the recommendation of the Metropolitan Area Planning Commission to approve the vacation order to reduce the platted setback, and deny the requested vacation of the utility easement, and authorize the necessary signatures.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? I see none. Mr. Clerk, can you open the roll? Motion passes, 7-0. Mr. Clerk, please call the next item.
Zone 2025-5, zone change request in the city from TF3 Two Family Residential to in our neighborhood retail to permit retail uses associated with the church, generally located on the northeast corner of West 11th Street North and North Waco Avenue, 1200 North Waco Avenue.
Scott Wadele again, from the Planning Department. So for this one, the applicant is requesting, as you heard, approval of a zone change from TF3 to in our neighborhood retail. This item is being heard today because the DAB and the Planning Commission recommendations are different, and also because it was deferred from a prior City Council meeting. In terms of the request, the applicant has indicated they're requesting the zone change in order to continue operating a bin store at the location. The applicant has been operating the store at the site in violation of the Unified Zoning Code. In terms of the properties, subject site's located at the northeast corner of 11th and Waco, as you can see here on the graphic. The subject site is just under a half an acre in size, consists of two ownership parcels, both under the same ownership. It's developed with a church and is in use as a bin store for part of the time. In terms of context, property to the north is owned B multifamily, we'll go to that, here's the zoning map, and developed with a single-family dwelling. Property to the south, across 11th Street, is owned TF3 and developed with a duplex. Properties to the east, across the alley, are owned TF3 and developed with a variety of single-family, multifamily, and duplex dwellings. And properties to the west, across Waco, are zone B and TF3 and developed with single-family dwellings. In terms of the staff report, it provides information about development standards, signage, parking, screening, and landscaping. In terms of review, on March 27th, the Planning Commission held a public hearing on this item, and recommended approval of the zone change, and that vote was 10 to 0. No members of the public spoke on this item at that hearing. On April 14th, the District Advisory Board reviewed the request and recommended denial of the zone change request, and that vote was four to three. Leading up to their vote, DAB members indicated that the requested rezoning is not in conformance with the Midtown Neighborhood Plan, that the business leaves significant amounts of trash, and that semi-trucks traffic related to the business blocks 11th Street, and that there's been public comments in opposition to the rezoning. No protests were received against the case, therefore the zone change can be approved by a simple majority of four of seven votes. In terms of the recommendation, the recommendation coming to you from the Planning Commission is that the City Council adopt the findings of the Planning Commission, adopt, approve the requested zone change, authorize the necessary signatures, and instruct the city clerk to publish the ordinance after approval. That requires, again, just four out of seven. Alternatives include the following: you can override the MAPC, adopt alternative findings, and deny the zone change, that would require five of seven. You can return the case to the MAPC for additional consideration, would require four of seven votes. And again, just a note about process, that public comment takes place during the public hearing at the Planning Commission. So with that, here's a review of some of the graphics. So here's the aerial, here's the zoning map that we talked about, here's a map from the comprehensive plan showing commercials recommended in the area. Again, this is the comprehensive plan. This is the Midtown Plan, which recommends, I believe it was a place of worship, social, religious, congregational, that's what it's recommended. Here's the protest map, and it shows 0% because there were no protests against the property, against the application. Here's the site, you can see some of the evidence of the bin store, property to the south, across the street to the west. And with that, I'll stand for any questions.
Questions for staff, beginning with Councilmember Glosscock.
Thank you, Mayor. Scott, is this still acting? I know they're doing bin storage there, which is in violation of their current zoning, correct?
Yes.
Is it still also an active place of worship?
Yes, my understanding is that they do the store part of the time, and then they will have church there and services there as well.
So I have another question, I think would be in relation to the zoning case too. Jennifer, can let me know if it's not too. The property tax status of the property as well, is, that wouldn't be obviously through zoning, but given that the church is also using it for business operations, have they excluded that from their property tax, or are they still property tax exempt for the entire property?
I don't have an exact answer for you, but I do believe that that's an interesting question, the appraiser would be very interested to determine what the answer is on that one. Yeah.
Can you remind us the use, again, what's the business, what particular?
So my understanding is that it's a bin store where kind of like wholesale goods come in, and it could be a whole variety of different things, but in kind of larger quantities, or maybe not in the packaging that you would expect at a regular retail store, and that those are the types of items that are sold there.
I see no further questions. This resides in Councilmember Ballard's district.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to override the MAPC, deny the zone change as recommended by the DAB. In support of this motion, I offer the following findings. The bin store business has been operating in violation of the zoning code. During its operations, area stakeholders have reported traffic issues with semis blocking 11th Street. This negatively impacts the public transportation network. In addition, stakeholders have reported issues with visual clutter in the yard and on the property. This clutter detrimentally affects nearby properties.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? I see none. Mr. Clerk, please open the roll. Motion passes, 7-0. Mr. Clerk, please call the next item.
Councilmember Agenda, approve that pursuant to Section 2.04.090, Mayor Woo's travel expenses as estimated on the travel authorization and expense form to attend League of Kansas Municipalities Governing Board Meeting and City Forum in Garden City, June 6th through 7th, 2025, for the purpose of representing the City of Wichita by meeting with state officials consistent with AR 3.1 be approved. Upon return from travel, actual expenses shall be reported to the Controller's Office.
Thank you, Clerk. This is, again, I am on the board of the League of Kansas Municipalities. This is our regular meeting, and this is, again, out in Garden City. And yes, there will be taxpayer dollars used in this travel.
Motion to approve the travel.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? I see none. Mr. Clerk, please open the roll. Motion passes, 7-0. Mr. Clerk, please call the next item.
Approve that pursuant to Section 2.4.090, Mayor Woo's travel expenses as estimated on the travel authorization and expense form to attend the 55th International Air Show in Paris, France, June 10th through 12th, 2025, for the purpose of representing the City of Wichita for economic development purposes, consistent with AR 3.1 be approved. Upon return from travel, actual expenses Upon return from travel, actual expenses shall be reported to the Controller's Office.
Again, this travel will be paid for by taxpayers. Last year, when we went to the London International Air Show, two businesses were asked to open shop here in Wichita. One has already done so, the other is still in process, and so, again, this is part of economic development for the city of Wichita.
I'd like to propose we approve the travel for Mayor Woo to go to the Paris Air Show.
Second.
Motion and a second, any further discussion? I see none. Mr. Clerk, please open the roll. Motion passes, seven zero. Mr. Clerk, please call the next item.
Approve that pursuant, pursuant to section two point zero four point zero nine zero, Councilmembers Johnson and Ballard's travel expenses as estimated on the travel authorization and expense form to attend National League of Cities City Summit in Salt Lake City, Utah, November nineteenth through twenty-third, twenty twenty-five, for the purpose of representing the city of Wichita, consistent with AR three point one be approved. Upon return from travel, actual expenses shall be reported to the Controller's Office.
I will move to approve this travel.
Second.
Motion and a second, any further discussion? I see none. Mr. Clerk, please open the roll. Motion passes, seven zero. Mr. Clerk, please call the next item.
Approve that pursuant to section two point zero four point zero nine zero, Councilmember Johnson's travel expenses as estimated on the travel authorization and expense form to attend Local Progress twenty twenty-five National Convening in Chicago, Illinois, July nine through thirteen, twenty twenty-five, for the purpose of representing the city of Wichita, consistent with AR three point one be approved. Upon return from travel, actual expenses shall be reported to the Controller's Office.
I have one question, simply because I have not seen Local Progress before. Councilmember Johnson, can you tell me what Local Progress is?
Local Progress is much like Y E O, another organization of elected officials, a lot of them are younger. This conference and the National Convening, I've talked a lot with some of my colleagues about housing and solutions to housing, so that's why I'm going to this one, and why I did not go to Y E O, which was two weeks ago.
I move to approve this travel.
Second.
Motion and a second, any further discussion? I see none. Mr. Clerk, please open the roll. Motion passes, seven zero. Mr. Clerk, please call the next item.
Approve that pursuant to section two point zero four point zero nine zero, Councilmember Johnson's travel expenses as estimated on the travel authorization and expense form to attend National Black Caucus of Local Elected Officials Summer Conference in Houston, Texas, July twenty-nine through August third, twenty twenty-five, for the purpose of representing the city of Wichita, consistent with AR three point one be approved. Upon return from travel, actual expenses shall be reported to the Controller's Office.
I will move to approve this travel.
Second.
Motion and a second, any further discussion? I see none. Mr. Clerk, please open the roll. Motion passes, seven zero. Mr. Clerk, please call the next item.
Approve that pursuant to section two point zero four point zero nine zero, Councilmember Hoheisel's travel expenses as estimated on the travel authorization and expense form to attend National League of Cities City Summit in Salt Lake City, Utah, November nineteenth through twenty-second, twenty twenty-five, for the purpose of representing the city of Wichita, consistent with AR three point one be approved. Upon return from travel, actual expenses shall be reported to the Controller's Office.
I move to approve this travel.
Second.
Motion and a second, any further discussion? I see none. Mr. Clerk, please open the roll. Motion passes, seven zero. Before we move on, I just want to make a quick addition. I would like to see Councilmember travel be put on the website under wichita.gov/citycouncil for transparency purposes. I'd like to see it shown, what that travel is, just like we have it here on, on the agenda, showing whether it was taxpayer-funded or not taxpayer-funded. I know that I just had two travels over the last seven days, and they were not taxpayer-funded, and so I have had questions from community, so I want to make sure that it is open and transparent. Thank you. We will now move to Councilmember appointments. Councilmember Hoheisel.
Thank you, Mary, or Mayor. I would like to appoint Dan Bateman to the District Advisory Board, and Jack Silver to Diversity, Inclusion, and Civil Rights Advisory Board. That means I will have one opening, Affordable Housing Review Board, so if anybody listening who'd like to serve on that, please apply. I'd like to satisfy my OCD here and get them all filled.
Thank you, Councilmember. Any other appointments? Councilmember Ballard.
Thank you. I would like to appoint David Gao to the Fire and Police Retirement Board.
I see no further appointments. I move to approve the appointments by Councilmembers Hoheisel and Ballard. We have an issue with an individual?
Okay.
All individuals on boards must live in the city of Wichita, correct?
Yeah. Not necessarily. There are some exceptions for technical needs, I don't think they, on certain boards, I don't think they all have to live. I'll check on that, but, this board was which, which appointment?
It was the Fire and Police Retirement.
I think that would probably require city residency.
Do you want me to wait till next week, or? Okay. Okay, thank you.
I move to approve the appointments by Councilmember Hoheisel and Ballard.
Second.
Motion and a second, any further discussion? I see none. Mr. Clerk, please open the roll. Motion passes, seven zero. Go down the line. Councilmember Hoheisel.
Thank you, Mayor. Just two things real quick. One, the Mayor's Youth Council Unity and the Community Event has been moved to this upcoming Saturday at East High, I believe, from two-thirty to six o'clock. Please come out, especially if you're a younger crowd, younger than me anyways. We'll have violence interrupters out there, we will have members of the Juvenile Intervention Unit, a few other resources too, mothers who are focusing on keeping fit and all out of our schools, so it'll be a good impactful event, and I just encourage all youth to come out. I'd also like to recognize a, a big loss in our community. Sunday, we did lose Jose Sembreno, who was very impactful and forward-thinking as far as reaching out to the youth and many in our community who are at risk. He had a, unity in the community events, he had a heart as big as all outdoors, and he really cared about the kids and the community, and second chances for other people as well, so that is a big loss. We are thinking of him and his family, and keeping them in our thoughts and prayers, and also realizing we lost another mentor, Dr. Polite, not too long ago. As people fall off, it falls to us and other members of the community to step up and take those roles, so just a message to the community and a message to us up here, it's, it's always time for us to pop up there and take the lead on a lot of these, these issues as well, so thinking of you, Jose.
Thanks, Mayor Johnston.
I'd like to invite everyone out to the Country Acres Dog Park opening tomorrow at eleven-thirty. Country Acres is just north and west of Central and Ridge. Unique dog park, because all the big trees are still there, and it has a pretty good-sized hill for the dogs, so I'd like everyone to come out, and I'm sure it'll be a hit.
Thank you both. Councilmember Ballard.
Thank you. Yesterday, finally, we got to open, reopen the Canine Rooster Dog Park over off Twenty-Fourth Street, just west of the Brahms. Very exciting, the dogs looked very happy, and it was a great turnout, so super happy that we finally got to do that, and then not long after that, we did the overnaming of the Eighteenth Street Bridge, next to St. Pat's, and it was overnamed Kit Paul Buster Sanchez. Apparently his family, two of them, I believe, helped build that bridge a long time ago, so it was very well-attended, very emotional for some of the community members. Sounds like he was an absolutely fantastic community leader on the north end, so we're happy to celebrate and highlight some of his work.
Thank you, Councilmembers. I see no further comments. Unfortunately, we cannot leave, we have an executive session. So I will read this executive session. I request an executive session for the council. I move that the council recess into executive session for ten minutes to receive information on a mediation pursuant to KSA seventy-five dash forty-three nineteen B two for legal consultation with the city attorney, which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship pending litigation, legal advice. The executive session is required to protect attorney-client privilege and the public interest.
Second.
Motion and a second, any further discussion? I see none. Mr. Clerk, please open the roll. Motion passes, seven zero. I will move another item. I move that the council recess into executive session for fifteen minutes to receive information on a contract pursuant to KSA seventy-five dash forty-three nineteen B two for legal consultation with the city attorney, which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship, legal advice. Executive session is required to protect attorney-client privilege and the public interest.
Second.
Motion and a second, any further discussion? Mr. Clerk, please open the roll. Motion passes, seven zero. This is twenty-five minutes in length, so we shall return at one fifty, that gives us a quick little break as well. We will return at one fifty. Thank you.